All right. Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to this, what I believe is our fourth budget work session for this fiscal 24 budget cycle. Today, we're going to have presentations from our Department of Technology Services as well as our Department of Economic Development, but we'll also be joined by a number of advisory groups with issue areas pertaining to those departments as well as our Business Improvement District and Neighborhood Partnership leadership. So as always, there will be opportunities after the presentations for the board members to ask questions, and all information about today's budget conversation can be found on the Budget and Finance page at the county's website at arlingtonva.us. This is Chair Christian Dorsey presiding. All board members are in attendance, and it's now my pleasure to turn it over to County Manager Mark Schwartz.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. I'm going to, for our first part, going to turn it over to Noran Lee, who is the Director of the Department of Technology Services, and give him the opportunity to introduce his staff who are here today.
Thank you. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to introduce my staff. With me over there sitting, we have Richard Archibald for Security and Compliance, Holly Hartel, Strategic Initiatives, David Hurley, who is coming in remotely, he's with Digital Innovation and Cloud, Elise Ostegui for Enterprise Applications, Jeff Taylor, Infrastructure and Operations, and Jonathan Manley, Service Delivery. If we go to the first slide? Oh. So the key takeaways from this slide, really, it's the realigning of the department to focus on providing excellence for core services for the enterprise that are secure, stable, and sustainable. Next slide. So again, these are the three pillars that we focus on, and the team that I just mentioned to you, the ones who lead those three pillars. Next slide, and turn it over to...
Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Lee. Thank you, Chairman Dorsey, members of the board. It's a real pleasure to be here today.
You have to introduce yourself along with Gil, because you didn't introduce yourself.
I'm Adil Asif with the Finance and Budget Division of DTS.
And Gilbert Pizzano.
And Gilbert Pizzano.
Also with the Finance Department of DTS.
Yep. Some notable accomplishments this year, as mentioned in other work sessions this year, we've partnered with the Treasurer's Office as well as the Commissioner of Revenue's Office to not just save trees and paper, but to help design a digital solution that allows constituents to conveniently handle their vehicle personal property taxes, business taxes, all online in a consolidated format. We've also collaborated with DHS to improve the effectiveness of their services by launching several applications, including the, if you could go back two slides, we actually had one slide, yep. We've launched the Foster Parent Processing application, the Child Welfare and Food Security Inventory application. We've stood up an internal customer service chatbot for DES for the call center over, for the call center. It's a tool that offers quick answers to frequently asked questions, much like the chatbot on our website, more commonly known as Ava, Arlington Virtual Assistant. We've, and finally, we're proud to announce that we fully implemented a single always-on VPN solution for the county. And the reason why this is important is it's eliminated a sustainability and support challenge that arose for DTS from our previous portfolio of VPN solutions. Now, this is a small fraction of DTS's successes, and we're thrilled to share them with you, but that's not what we're here to talk about. We're here to discuss the future. So on to the next slide. As Mr. Lee mentioned in our opening slide, security and customer experience are major drivers of our operating plan. For the past eight months, we've engaged in detailed discussions with our department partners on how we can further improve and optimize and automate the services they deliver. And you all heard some of those accomplishments on the previous slide under our Accomplishments section, whether that's introducing chatbots, like in the case of DES, or moving an application to the cloud where it's more user-friendly, tends to be easier to access, ultimately creating a better customer experience. That's what we'd like to carry into the next fiscal year. On the next few slides, we'll talk about DTS's workforce, as well as discuss some budgetary pressures that has led us to recommend some adjustments on what's sustainable and what's not. But before we get into that, we'd briefly like to talk about our focus on equity on the next slide. So in addition to participating in the countywide racial equity training with Mr. Byrd, we formed a cross-sectional team of volunteers to look at racial equity outcomes and processes within our enterprise IT department. They've been tasked with first seeking to understand and then making specific recommendations that will hopefully minimize unconscious bias and address disparities. When it comes to the question of digital equity and broadband study, we, like our partners in CPHD, await the results of the broadband study slated to release later this summer. But in the meantime, we've taken steps to increase the number of outdoor Wi-Fi hotspots from 26 to 28 this year. This includes all eight county libraries, 15 community centers and parks, three fire stations, two key government offices. And what we've noticed is, as we've expanded the number of outdoor Wi-Fi hotspots, we've naturally seen an increase in usage year over year, as shown in this graph on here. While we're on this slide, a quick announcement. If you'd like to learn more about these outdoor Wi-Fi hotspots, their locations, how it works, please visit our website at arlingtonva.us and search outdoor Wi-Fi. With that said, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Pizzano.
All right. I'm Gilbert Pizzano. I'm the Finance and Budget Manager for DTS. Good afternoon, board. Thank you for having us. So just a quick summary of our proposed changes for FY '24. In FY '23, our adopted budget was $29.2 million with 91 FTEs. That proposed change for FY '24 is about a $1 million change. It's about 3.6 percentage points. And that new proposed FY '24 budget would be $30.2 million. Again, FTEs remaining flat at 91 FTEs. Some key things just to kind of point out are significant items in our proposed changes is contractual increases at $550,000. Those are commitments that we have that contractually were obligated to pay that increase. And a lot of these also service the enterprise, such as enterprise software licenses and items such as that. And then also the removal of one-time funding for training. That was one-time funding provided to us in FY '24, $115,000, and that is an adjustment being removed for FY 2024. The next item I just wanted to share is the summary of budget adjustments. Here are the listing of reductions and the dollar amount that is associated with that. So some items in here includes a contract tracing Microsoft licenses. Those are related to COVID response for contract tracing. As we're kind of scaling that support down, we're pulling back those licenses. It is worth noting that if we are to scale or ramp back up that support service, we would need to find additional dollars to renew those licenses in the future. Additionally, we are eliminating $95,000 from our budget for Gartner licenses. That provides three licenses or three-seat access to Gartner services, and this consulting services that is provided to us for research and other kind of support that we might need from a consulting-type service. And while it's a critical and important service for us, we do value it, but during, you know, tough times, we had to make this decision to eliminate that. And then net motion maintenance, this is an elimination of $19,000, almost $20,000. This is the maintenance related to remote access that is being sunsetted and being replaced with this new on-all-the-time remote access service. And then the next item is just the virtual observer, which is just the maintenance for call center transaction recordings. As we're moving to a new telephone system, this is not going to be needed, so that is an elimination we've made. And then the last item is just Connect Arlington. It's a reallocation of our charges to Connect Arlington, and we'd be increasing that by $400,000.
So the key budget considerations with cybersecurity, just really high level, we remain engaged with state and national partners. And when it comes to service and program efficiencies, we're going to discover, continue to discover, exploit opportunities to streamline processes for greater efficiency. For recruitment and retention, really, we're not having too much of a problem in this area. Like me, people are drawn to Arlington County because of the culture. It's a culture where everyone is valued and has an opportunity to make a difference in the community. Recently, we just hired an individual, a network engineer from Amazon, and we are currently in the final negotiations, if you will, to hire an executive from Freddie Mac as the new deputy for the department. For leveraging technology-skill workforce across the county, really, this just focuses on increasing the cross-departmental collaboration for better outcomes. Recently, one of the ones that was talked about in the other slides, the Consolidated Billing Vehicle Personal Property Tax Project, which was a collaborative effort between DTS and the Treasurer's Office, yielding real-world results to improve the user experience in the county. And I open it up for questions.
Well, thank you very much, Mr. Lee, Mr. Pizzano, and Mr. Asif. We will, before we get to questions from the board, I do believe we have John Burke, who's the Vice Chair of our Information Technology Advisory Commission, or the Tech Commission, as it's lovingly known.
Thank you, Chair. We submitted a letter to the board, so I won't recap everything in it, but to simply summarize our recommendations on priorities, priority one is securing the county's network. Cybersecurity is always job zero. Number two, executing the cloud transitions that were funded through the Capital Improvement Program. We would not want any of those projects to come under risk in the budget, current budget conditions. The digital transformation that the DTS identified earlier is something that really deserves continuous attention over time. It creates efficiencies, not necessarily this year, but next year. It creates more flexibility in difficult budget considerations, so continued investment in digital transformation. And then the one thing that we think is not currently underway that we would recommend for consideration is the creation of a countywide privacy program. There is privacy work that's being done in DTS, but the Tech Commission's recommendation is that that privacy work be expanded to cover the entire government. We don't think that's a one-year project. We think that that is a multi-year growth in capability that the county should consider, but we think that making an investment and starting that this year would be warranted consistent with our prior set of recommendations. I'd also say, since we sent the letter, Mr. Lee issued his strategic plan for DTS, which the Commission anticipates unequivocally endorsing at our next meeting when he's able to brief us on it more fully, but we've read through it, and we don't really see any concerns at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Burke. Appreciate that very much. I think that's all of the Commission speakers we have for DTS, so colleagues' conversation is with us. I'd like to actually start with a conversation or with a question about the reductions with the Gartner licenses. Is that with the Gartner Group, or is that a different company?
It's Gartner Consulting.
Yeah. So I would imagine that that is in some ways conducive to your all being able to be current on, you know, very emerging needs in your industry, that this allows you to, without finding the way to build up the staff capacity, to get the access to the latest and great thinking in ways to, you know, promote greater cybersecurity, you know, advance a lot of your initiatives. It seems significant to me to lose that capability when we're not increasing headcount at all. It seems like this will compromise us to some degree. So, Mr. Pizzano, you mentioned that this is something that you would rather not do, but I'd like to hear a little bit more about how it will actually impact your organization's effectiveness.
So, Mr. Chairman, so that would really have an impact from maybe a time consumption when we're doing research on different technologies, best practices. So Gartner is kind of that go-to-one shop where we can get all that information from at once, whereas if we're able to do that initial research on our own, which we have, and I've utilized Gartner in previous roles at other agencies before. I mean, it is a good resource, but there are workarounds for that. So I don't see it having a significant impact, but it certainly does have some.
Okay. Thank you.
Could I follow up?
Yes, Vice Director Garvey.
That's exactly where I was going to start on my questions. And I'm sure you thought it, does Gartner, I do not know, do they have much to do with security issues, cybersecurity, or is it a different sort of resource?
So Gartner is a consulting organization that anything in the whole gamut of information technology, whether it's cybersecurity best practices, applications, cloud, whatever it is, the whole gamut of it. So basically, they have different experts. Usually, they hire former CIOs or former technologists from different industry, and they bring them on board as consultants, and they partner with you, and they basically will advise you on different things. If you're creating new policies, like in the past, I've created a policy, when I was with NCIS, I created a new data management policy, and they leveraged the Gartner Consulting Group. They assigned an analyst to me, and they just basically reviewed it, making sure I had all my I's dotted, T's crossed. So, I mean, it's a good resource, but again, as I said earlier, it's not going to have a, I don't feel it's going to have a significant impact on our ability to do our job.
That's helpful, because that's, I mean, I assume that that's what you're thinking, but I'd like to be reassured. My concern, and I gather that's not here, is that if it's got to do with cybersecurity, that's something that happens really, really fast, and you don't want to, like, realize you have a problem, oh, let me have a couple weeks to research. You're not going to want to do that. So I assume it's not, that's not an issue for this one.
No.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the reassurance. Thank you.
You're welcome. Mr. Karantonis, and then Mr. Di Ferenti.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Always good to touch base with the department. A couple of issues that I have questions that I have on how the Connect Arlington, what's the future for Connect Arlington? So I even, I see that you are reducing the allocation to Connect Arlington, but at the same time, we know that there are federal programs right now that Biden Administration has rolled out, a significant digital equity set of potential funding, and I don't know whether we qualify for that, or we are looking at this as a potential source. And you can, a related question to that as well. So we had this innovation district down in National Landing, right, about two years ago. There was an allocation of money that we would be receiving from that. If I remember correctly, it was somewhere slightly north of $2 million, $2.5 million, 2.8, something like that, plus a later, some later money. And the idea was, if I remember correctly, that we would invest that money in, you know, in our equity goals. So is that an additional source, or what is our overall commitment to, you know, digital equity? How does this relate to these two issues, to these two sources?
So you're asking specifically with Connect Arlington and the innovation zone?
Yes.
So I'm going to ask Jeff to speak on the Connect Arlington piece, as far as the different projects we have planned and what the plan for the future is with Connect Arlington, and then I'll have Ms. Holly Hartel talk about the innovation zone.
Sure. Good afternoon. Jeff Taylor, I'm the Division Chief for Infrastructure and Operations. We have about 15 to 20 current projects working on Connect Arlington. Anything from undergrounding existing fiber that's going into schools for resiliency, we're not losing Connect Arlington when trees are falling or things like that, to expanding in our business corridors. We have a partnership with Marymount, and they're coming to us asking for new buildings to be added as well. So there is, like I said, probably about 20 projects over the next three years.
Any chance to tap into, or do we have any perspective on tapping into federal money? There is, this is, the Biden Administration, I think, the, it's the federal initiative on broadband equity access and deployment. Bead is the short. Are we trying to get anything out of that, and is that at all relevant for Connect Arlington?
Yeah, I'm going to have to pass it back to Noran on that question. I know regionally, we're looking at federal money for a number of things, but I don't know about the specifics.
And you don't need to answer that now. Just keep it for later.
I'm sorry. So for the, as far as we're expanding, is Richard Archibald here?
Yes.
Can you talk towards some of the expansion, as far as what can be leveraged, as far as with Comcast and broadband?
Okay, great. Thank you. Sorry, couldn't see the thread. So specifically around the allocation change?
Yes.
We're effectively tapping a different source of funds. We receive a PEG capital grant every year from Comcast and Verizon. It's $1.68 per subscriber per month that they remit to us every year, and that money is designated as capital expense for television production. And the PEG stands for Public Educational and Government. There have been some recent changes in rulemaking at the FCC that expand what we can use that money for. For many years, it was a very narrow slice of capital expense. It now covers things like network carriage, because most communities now use these monies to build their iNets on Comcast Fiber or Verizon, like our partners in Alexandria and Fairfax. We have our own network. And so that as a, from a service perspective, is eligible then for that type of capital treatment, and we're just tapping those funds to help offset the budget change.
If I can add also, that was related, I think your question is a little bit more focused on the end-user, broadband users getting assistance on their bills?
Yeah.
My understanding, and I think you can speak to this, is that Comcast has a program, it's not something that Arlington County applies for, but we've worked with Comcast, and they have provided it to the end-users. I can't speak to Verizon, but you may know more about that.
There have been some changes recently with federal legislation. Both providers now offer assistance to end-users. There is a combination of programs for affordable broadband that bring down bills for either Verizon or for Comcast, depending on income, and also depending on if you're accessing other public benefits. So that's where it triggers that eligibility. Both of them have a reasonably good product for folks who need low-cost internet at home, and we have details of how to access those programs. I think we work a lot with CPHD to publicize them and talk about them, but ultimately, it's a contract between the provider and the individual.
And if I can add also, you asked a question about the digital, about the innovation zone and the conversation we had with JBG Smith. I don't know whether we have actually received those payments. I'm going to have to check on that, but we had said at the time, we would set aside those funds for such items as doing the last mile connections for our affordable housing projects and investing in digital equity. I don't think we, and Holly, you can let me know one way or the other, I don't think we've received the money yet. I think that, under the terms of the agreement, that was over a period of time, but I said at the time, and I'm still committed, having that money set aside for digital equity.
Okay. That's, that's good, good. I mean, for me, it's important to have a good overview of what are the resources that are converging into anything we want to do with digital equity. And I'm really focusing on, first of all, to the resources that we control and we own. So that's for me, important to understand, you know, because, you know, you will be running the, you are leading the effort there, and that's...
I'll get you, I'll get you an update on that, because it's been, I think it's been a year and a half, or, I've lost track of time. I don't even know when, it was sometime in the last hundred years that we did it.
Not quite. All right, Mr. Di Ferenti, and then we'll go back around.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question is about the cybersecurity budget, all for investing. I'm just missing, I think, a little context. Last year to this coming year would be 149% increase based on the book, and I'm wondering, based on the budget book and the analysis, I'm wondering what led to that fluctuation? And if you, you know, if it's best, if you want to follow up offline, if there's some pieces that are more appropriately done there, that's fine, but that's the question.
Sure. I will work with Gilbert a bit on the response. Some of this is related to accounting changes in how we look at these services. Things that we purchased for operational have become more security-focused, things we, there's just changes in how these technologies are deployed around the county. And when we found that something kind of has shifted into that bucket, we've made sure to reallocate that in our own financials. So I'll let you talk about some of the specific moving parts.
It's a little bit of a restructuring of where we're expensing it. So we're trying to clean up our record-keeping and have things a little more centralized, so with that, we can quickly identify those things. So while it wasn't necessarily that large of an increase in this expenditure in the security side or cybersecurity, it was more of like, while it was recognized in other cost centers, we've now kind of realigned it so that it's a little more contained within one cost center.
Okay.
And line of business as well.
Great. Thank you. I'll, I want to follow up just to understand it a little bit better, but I'll do that via an email at some point. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Vice Director Garvey?
Yeah, thank you. I, I found myself reading this budget for whatever, having flashbacks to 2020 and realizing how, like the Teams, like, we had no, there was a time when we had no Teams meetings. It was only like a few years ago, which is amazing. And I thought, I found also the, which I And I thought, I found also that, which I know we made great strides in the digital equity in that time, which is great, really impressive to see. And I found, can you tell me, what does it cost us to do a hotspot, a public hotspot? And do we have, how much overall are we putting in the budget for digital equity, which would be all of these different programs together? I'm just, just kind of wondering, and you may not have that number, because I don't know if it's broken out that way. In other words, there are a lot of programs we have to make sure people who can't afford it can get access. Do we know how much that all is together? I was sort of wondering. Yeah, okay.
Definitely said we need research and get back to you.
Okay, I assume it's not too difficult, I mean, you know, I don't want you to spend hours and hours, but I, I think for our public to know, I think that's an important, an important thing. I have, thank you. One other question, but we can do another round?
Go right ahead.
Okay. And I'll just, this one's just sort of broader, invite you to talk a little bit about the Commission's comments on privacy policy, privacy issues, because I think that is big, and just sort of your thoughts on that.
So, we're looking at different privacy programs internally. I know right now, it's more decentralized and we're moving towards something at a larger, more comprehensive program, but I don't have the specific details on that at this point.
Yeah, I'm assuming you're thinking, and I think, I mean, I think probably an overall county privacy policy, do we have one? I'm not sure that we really do. Eh, sort of.
Kind of do.
Yeah. I mean, that's a good idea.
I would just say, and I know Mr. Burke made the point, we have gathered, okay, we didn't have very much three years ago. Then we gathered everything in one place. I view that as essentially taking pieces of paper and stapling them together. That's not quite the same as having an overall plan, so I think the Commission's point is well-taken. I know that Noran and team are anxious to get out there and do that, he's sort of looking at me. I want to do that, but since Noran has become the Director of BTS, I think the thing that you've heard from him, this is not a knock on anything that's happened before, is but sort of like focusing on the basics and getting those all taken care of. This privacy plan is incredibly important. It's going to be, it's not going to be a short walk in the park. It's going to be a big conversation. So, once we sort of get a little bit of the baseline work done, then I think we'll be ready to approach that. I'll come to the board with a proposal on that. It just pulls in so many different things all the time. We, as a board, I think you may have been familiar, is probably at this point, eight or nine years ago, when we had school buses get cameras that they were using with the stop signs that came out, and also all the digital media we collect, the privacy policies are big, and we also had that project in Clarendon over the last two years. To pull that all together is a little bit complicated. We're going to do it. I can't tell you when we're going to start, but we will.
Okay, we'll start soonish. When you're going to finish is probably another question. And the Commission acknowledged, this is, this is not going to be short, but I'm pleased to hear we're thinking about it. I understand, fair enough. Thank you. I look forward to the discussion. Thanks.
Great. Mr. Di Ferenti?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to thank Mr. Lee for the focus on customer service in addition to sort of the basics and the organization, and you can feel a little bit of the military background, at least if you're not military like me. So, that's, that's great. And with respect to digital equity, I'm glad you mentioned the summer was when it will finish, and I think the manager and Ms. Hertel and others will know that I'm pretty focused on the end time of this, because there's a little additional piece that I'm interested with respect to digital equity at the, once, once the contract is, most of the work has been done, but not fully completed, and I'll follow up on that over time. Thanks.
So, a question from me about the metrics for digital equity and the households served by. Just want to make sure I'm reading this all correctly. These are the number of households served in a particular year. It's not, it's not cumulative, or is it? I'm having a hard time figuring out whether we're serving.
The numbers on.
So, this is on page 167.
The numbers on performance measures for the hotspots is cumulative for the year?
For the year, but not, not cumulative, including the years prior.
Within each year, so it's a total.
Right.
Yes.
Great. And in the narrative description, it says that 526 of the households that were served during COVID are now operated, or I guess maybe paid for by Arlington Public Schools. Can you just tell me what that is all about? Is APS currently still providing internet service for certain households that began during COVID?
I'd have to get back to you on the specifics on that, unless you want, Holly, do you want to talk to that? We could ask Holly to come speak to that.
Sure. Hello, everybody.
Microphone out. There we go.
Am I on? Yes, it's on. Sorry. I can answer that. Yes, those, that's referring to the Comcast Internet Essentials. We had funded that with KARA's funding for the first year, and they've now incorporated and are continuing to fund it, and have now built that into their operating budget.
Oh, okay.
That's why the difference is.
No, APS.
APS, sorry.
Yeah. Right. And my last question on this is regarding when the households that we serve at Arlington Mill and at Queens Court, do we have guaranteed upload and download speeds that we're delivering? And can you give us a sense of how they compare to the Comcast Internet Essentials?
So, for Arlington Mill, they're not using Connect Arlington. They have now gone back to a Comcast program where they are giving a credit to the renters to be able to use it. One thing I want to note is with the ACP, the American Connectivity Program, Comcast has also increased their speeds. So, for $30, which is what people can qualify for, for the ACP, you now have, it's, I think it's 5010, and I think they're planning on increasing that as well. So, they're doing some investment in Arlington that's going to increase the speeds.
Okay. And what about Queens?
Queens Court, I have to get back to you, I can't remember.
Okay.
I apologize.
All right. I see no further questions. So, Mr. Lee and team, thank you very much. We appreciate the window into your work and look forward to the year ahead. Thank you. And I'll now invite our team from Arlington Economic Development to get ready to occupy the seats here in the front.
I am ecstatic to introduce Ryan Toohill. I feel like I've spent the last full two days with you and have you introduce your team.
Try it again. Yeah, you got it. It's red on the.
He's AED, not technology, so.
Also rookie, first time.
Well, good afternoon, everyone, and it's a pleasure to be with you today to discuss our economic development strategy and our budget for the coming year. Before I begin, as the relatively new person still here at the table, I just wanted to take a moment to thank the board and the county manager and deputy county manager, Shannon Flanagan Watson, and the community for the warm welcome to Arlington. I also want to thank our AED team, who's helped guide me for the past four months. And so, just to introduce a few folks with us today, our acting deputy director, Marian Marquez, and our acting assistant director, Ifyaki Bongar are here. And then we have other members of our team scattered out throughout the audience, and they're here and available if you need to speak with them. Before we move on to the next slide, I just wanted to, excuse me, we can actually go to the next slide. So, in recent weeks, I've been having a chance to talk with members of our community and the business community and the community at large. And when I, when I go out to speak with them about our economic development kind of principles and strategy, there's three main things I touch on, and that's just what I wanted to briefly highlight for you tonight. First is that a healthy business community is really how we generate economic prosperity for Arlingtonians, and it's how we generate the funding, as you know, that is, makes it possible to have the great services we have here. The second principle is that we only are going to be able to get to sustained economic growth through partnership, and I'm really excited at some of the early partnerships that we, we have established and will continue to establish. Everybody in this room is an economic developer in some way or some form or fashion, and so we look forward to continuing to grow our partnerships. And then finally, most importantly, we're striving and going to continue to strive for inclusive economic development, both at all levels of the economy and all corners of the county, because we know that the more inclusive we are, the more all-encompassing those results will be and the benefits will be for our community. So, in the next slide, I just want to touch base on the big issue of the day, and we're going to talk to you about our office vacancy issue and some of the ways we're working to address that. So, you know, our model here has really been based on the premise that professional workers go to an office every day, and that model was really upended during the pandemic and with the dawn of remote work. And so, you know, what that's resulted in is everyone knows is that we have an oversupply of office in a time of almost no demand, and that's really creating a situation where I think we need to be prepared for some structural vacancy for the years to come, and that's going to make it challenging for us. And then we'll be there on top of that, all the other economic uncertainties we're facing, whether it's the global markets or rising costs or the talent shortage, we have a very big, big challenge ahead of us. And so, you know, we're kind of keeping an eye on all those things, but the one other factor that I just want to bring to the board's attention is the factor of time. We are in a position right now where we're like every other community, we're trying to figure this out, and we're trying to determine our next phase of economic growth. But I really want to encourage us to be bold and creative in our approach, because I think the first community that, the first communities that are out the gates with bold ideas and action are going to be the winners of the future. And so, I think we've put together a budget proposal that does some of that, and we're going to come back to you in the coming months with some other ideas we have, but I just wanted to kind of bring that up today as a starting point, because I think that that's something we can build on, because we have a great reputation here of being innovative, and I think that that's something we'd like to continue. In the next slide, this is the county manager's favorite slide, is our office vacancy. And, you know, obviously today, we're at 22.1%. That translates into about 9 million square feet of vacant office. We're trending a lot like other downtowns, and what I mean by that is that we're seeing the flight to quality, so we're seeing trophy office perform better. We're seeing those buildings with lower vacancies and better rental rates. We're actually seeing Class C office vacancy go down because of conversion, and we're seeing the same issues others are seeing in Class A and Class B buildings that are older. Those are struggling, they're having a harder time leasing, and they're possibly the ones that are more ripe for conversion or repositioning in the future. And of course, we have our issue of our sublease market, which has grown pretty substantially, and that's a threat for us that we are continuing to monitor. And going forward, our team is anticipating that the deals that we are going to work as it relates to finding tenants for office space are going to be smaller, but they're going to still take the same amount of time that we actually are going to be, as if it was a larger tenant. And in most cases, those deals are going to have smaller square footage when they renew, or at the outset, they might be smaller. And so, you know, we're trying to find companies that are in a growth stage so we can get them here and then hopefully grow them. And we're seeing shrinkage, obviously, in the federal government sector and in the nonprofit sector, which is something we're continuing to monitor, and we have some of that here, and so we're keeping an eye on that. You know, in terms of bright spots, though, we do, we have seen increased or continued, I should say, competitiveness for the few large deals that are in the pipeline, when those come through either VDP or through our work and outreach. Arlington is still at the top of the list of destinations, and so that's a good sign. And we have a couple of deals we're working right now. Homegrown tech companies also continue to show a lot of promise in terms of both starting here and then growing here, and we're continuing to see good leasing in the defense sector, defense tech sector and the government contracting sector, particularly those companies that require secured space. So, those are some bright spots, and we're hoping that with announcements like Amazon's to return to work at least three days a week, starting in May, that might encourage other corporate offices and other companies here in Arlington to follow suit. But I think it's going to be some time until we see the ripple effects of that. Next slide, please. You know, before, I want to talk a little bit about what we're doing to address office vacancy, but before I say that, I just kind of want to finish up by saying that, you know, office vacancy is really more of a catch-all term for regional and national trends that we're seeing. So, as I mentioned, diminished demand, oversupply, return to office uncertainty, and so on. We're also focused, we also have some macroeconomic headwinds that we're really facing, and things like rising interest rates and costs, cap rates and building values that are putting downward pressure on our market. What I say that to say that, you know, we are really focused at AED on the things that we can try to move the needle on. And I'm going to describe four things that we're, four areas that we're focused on, and then tell you a little bit about what we're doing. So, the first is identifying and capturing tenant demand, rethinking office supply, supporting our business district vibrancy, and then marketing Arlington outside of the community. So, while our pipeline is smaller than in years past, I'm really encouraged by the work of our business investment group, because we are laser-focused on businesses that are here that might have expiring leases and businesses that might be in growth mode. So, we're really making a big push on retention and expansion. And we're also continuing to engage companies from outside the region. The business investment team is also really working to strengthen our innovation ecosystem. You know, we have a strong reputation of growing companies here, and we think that the two budget proposals for the Innovation Fund and the Tech Zone Amendments will help with that. And we're also beginning to explore ideas like creating an innovation district in National Landing in partnership with Alexandria as, as another option to get creative and try to leverage all of our partnerships. Next slide, please. But we're also beginning to rethink how, rethinking the office supply and how we utilize office in our market. You know, the county manager's Commercial Market Resiliency Initiative is a great first step, and we've really been able to position the county to rapidly respond to changing market conditions and ensure that the county doesn't stay, stand in the way of economic development. I really want to thank Mark McCauley, who's here today, and his colleagues at CPHD for really leading that effort. But we also have established internally at AED a work group that across, from staff from across multiple divisions that are beginning to look and do a deeper analysis of the office market. And we're going to be looking at, kind of going building by building to identify where our troubled assets are, and then begin to engage business owner, or excuse me, owners and developers about those assets, to see if we can find a way to partner with them to help reposition buildings. That is work that's going to take a few more months, but the team is really excited about that, and I am too, because I think that's, that's a way we can not only identify where our real priority problems are, but then what tools we may want to deploy to reposition, convert, or even re-lease office buildings. So, we'll come back to you all later this year, excuse me, later this spring, after we have a chance to talk with our county partners and also our industry. We'll go to the next slide, please. Business district vibrancy is a really big focus for us, and we've got some great partners that we're working with to ensure that we have unique and attractive business districts for not only our workers, but also the people that live here. The outdoor dining and activation of shared spaces is a critical initiative that we're partnering with, with CPHD, and we're really looking forward to when we can get out consistent and processes for outdoor dining. We think that's really needed to continue our business district vibrancy efforts. And we're also engaged through cultural affairs and our staff that works with our bids and neighborhood partnerships to ensure that we're doing everything we can to make our business districts as vibrant as they can be. And then finally, in the next slide, I say finally, we have like 20 more slides, so sorry. We're going to be here for a while. There's a lot to talk about today. In this, and yeah, in part one, before intermission, we want to talk, yeah, we want to talk to you about marketing our story. You know, we've done a lot of work, and I want to thank Kelly and her team in communications for the work they've done over the past about two years to work on a brand refresh and a website redesign to really help us stand out. The other, the other things that we're doing there are engaging targeted decision- The other, the other things that we're doing there are engaging targeted decision makers. Those could be C-suite executives or site selectors through email marketing, social media, and trade show events. And that's really important work that goes on behind the scenes every day. And finally, for the first time in 2008, we are engaging a public relations firm to help generate earned media. And that's really important for us to get the message out nationally about the, why Arlington is a great business destination. So we'll be, we'll be doing that work once we get a firm on board later this year. So that kind of concludes just some opening remarks about kind of where we go, where we're going with office vacancy. We know it's on the top of your mind, and we just wanted to let you know that we are working across the whole department, frankly, to begin to put programs and initiatives in place to address this. What we'll go on in the next section is just to walk through briefly some department highlights, and I'll go through these. I know you've seen this in advance. I'll try to go through this rather quickly before we turn it over to talk about the budget. In BizLaunch, you know, this is like a tale of having a good problem. You know, services, demand for services from BizLaunch are at an all-time high, and Tara's team is doing everything they can to address that need. Small businesses, you know, continue to pivot out of the pandemic and to adjust to the new normal. And, you know, we're really seeing a substantial uptick in sales, which is, which is a good thing. But we're still dealing with a few issues that we're continuing to monitor. One being legacy businesses that might have closed or had been sold. That's something, a trend we're kind of keeping an eye on. Access to capital continues to be an issue for small businesses. So we're providing resources in that area. We're also seeing an interesting trend where home-based businesses are starting to get more involved in creative coworking spaces. And this is really a trend we're seeing around women caretakers. So we're seeing, that's a good thing, because we're moving people out of their home business into, into commercial space. So we'll continue to keep an eye on that. And leasing affordability continues to just be a challenge in some areas. More specifically, our team is very engaged on Columbia Pike as an area of focus. You know, there we have, we're having a lot of redevelopment occur, and that can be good, because it creates new, new retail space, but it also puts pressure on existing businesses that might be in those redevelopment areas. So that's something we're really working on to engage businesses on location services and other business services to ensure that if there's something we can do to help them with those transition times, we can do that. And we're just really thankful also for the funding that we had over the past years for relaunch. We're serving 28 businesses a month in that program, which is phenomenal. And we're really happy to see that there's money in that, in the proposed budget to continue that and to add an FTE to that, that team. In the next slide, business investment is really continuing to be hyper-focused on retention. That's where we've seen a substantial, I mean, 90% of our business, our wins, if you will, are business retention or expansions. So that really signals that that is, that needs to be a core focus for us. So we'll be, in addition to every day working to engage businesses if they have an issue that we hear about, we'll also be doing our big push during Business Appreciation Month in May. And we'll be engaging lots of partners to go out and meet businesses that are fast-growing or are largest businesses or businesses that are, have expiring leases. And that, that program actually resulted us in helping four businesses expand their footprint last year, and it created over 350 new jobs. So, I mean, we are seeing that program work with a high-touch, kind of high-engagement strategy. As I mentioned earlier, the business investment team is also working on attraction. We are very focused on the aerospace and defense industries, headquarters locations, and also we're going to be starting quarterly campaigns in specific growth industries to target companies that aren't located here. And finally, we've also been involved in our Talent Initiative, which is a really unique program that I know some of the board members came and visited us with the county manager last week. But this program really aims to help Arlingtonians who don't have skills or experience in the tech industry, but who want to get into that industry, gain those skills through a work-based apprenticeship program. It's a pilot program. We funded it with ARPA funds, and we have 11 learners in that program right now. And some of the stories that we're getting about just folks who have been able to quit part-time jobs, because this is a paid program and they can get skilled up, and now they're moving into full-time tech positions, is, is really phenomenal. And we have a great partnership with Acceleration right here in Arlington. And that's something that we're looking to find additional partners and funding for to continue and hopefully scale. But I just want to thank the team for their hard work and very creative way to try to do something to, to address the biggest pain point our companies have. In the next slide, as I mentioned, our communications team is doing a great job with targeting audiences in a variety of ways, mostly focused on C-suite executives, site selectors, growth companies. Just to want to briefly mention that, based on our dashboard that we put in place this year, our metrics are looking very good compared to similar-sized economic development offices. And we seem to be hitting, based on the data, the right people at the right point in the decision-making process. So we'll, we'll continue those efforts in full force. In the next slide, we, our Real Estate Development Group has, is small but mighty. They've been not only working on the Commercial Market Resiliency, but they've been spending considerable time and energy on housing components related to our Economic Empowerment Initiatives, most notably participating in the Crystal House RFP and then also the Master Financing and Development Plan for Barcroft. And so Mark's team is doing a great job in assisting other departments in those areas. And also, we're continuing to provide staff liaison support to our three bids and our partnerships across the county. In our next, we will talk about Arlington Convention and Visitor Services. You know, our hospitality sector is actually beginning to show really good signs of recovery since the pandemic with strong traveler interest. Our website clicks and informational requests are way up.
Did you just say blezier?
I didn't say, I didn't get to that part yet.
You got to the blezier part?
No, it's the big, wait, we're going to end it. Yeah, yeah. But now that you've ruined it, we are seeing what's known as blezier, which is business and leisure travel combined. So you maybe you go on business and then you stay a few extra days, and it's Mark's favorite new word. So now I'll be probably adding a metric on that.
To keep the manager happy.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. But really, all kidding aside, we are seeing our return to seasonal travel, which has been great. We're almost back to 2019 levels. And we're also seeing really good interest when our team goes out to trade shows and talks to group touring, tour groups. We're seeing a lot of interest in Arlington, which is terrific. The one area we are, we are lagging behind a little bit is in the business, the traditional business travel, but we're hoping to make that up. The other thing that you'll be seeing in the, this summer is Emily's team is rolling out a brand new, a new brand for State Arlington with a new website. This was also funded through ARPA via Virginia Tourism Corp, Commission or Corporation. And this was a really big influx of money that we got. In addition to doing those two things, we're also going to be doing some really targeted ad campaigns to bring visitors to Arlington. So that'll all be rolling out this summer, and I'm sure we'll be sharing a lot more information on that soon. In Cultural Affairs, we are continuing to support our artists as agents of economic development. You know, we get a tremendous benefit from our art entrepreneurs in terms of the creativity and innovation economic value they bring to our community. And so we're doing that on an individual level and by supporting large festivals and through the mobile art truck and things like our theaters and support services. And we're also continuing to deliver art installations throughout the county. In this year and going into next year, a big focus will be the realignment of programs and services to our Cultural Affairs Campus down at, on Four Mile Drive, Four Mile Run Drive, and the opening of the temporary art space at 2700 Nelson. So we're really excited about what the, what kind of new energy that we're bringing to that area. And, and we're also going to be continuing to do our annual grants. This year, thanks to the board, we also implemented our PLACE grant, which is, which is focused on equity in the arts and arts heritage. And so we're really thankful for that. Those applications, I believe, are out, and they are, but we're not in the process of reviewing yet. And then finally, the, our, I want to just really, as someone who's new to the county, I just want to take a moment and say how impressed I am with all the work that's being done around equity. We have a racial equity action team in our department. It's volunteer-based. We have representation from most, if not all, of the divisions. And we do every other month meetings where we, we have conversations about race and equity. What we've also begun to do is really take a racial equity lens into our work. So whether that's our promotional materials, it might be actual program work that we're doing in terms of who we're trying to reach in the business community. And it's just really great to see our department embrace that. And that's something that will certainly continue under my direction. With that said, we'll move on to our final section, which I'm going to hand it over to Marion and Ifiak to walk you through the budget changes and some of the major funding programs that are in the proposed budget.
Good afternoon. My name is Ifiak, in case you don't remember. I'm here to talk about AED's budget slide, starting with our general fund budget, and then I'll talk about the details of our reduction and finally, the tourism budget. The proposed budget, let me first start with the framework of the presentation. The presentation started with where we are, what's happening, a little bit about what the divisions are doing. And now we're going to be talking about like the investments that are needed to get us to where we need to go to. So that's the flow. In terms of our budget, we have a, our budget is 9.78 million, which is a 3% reduction from our adopted FY23 budget. We have some personnel budget increases mainly from salary increases and the addition of the BizLaunch and Espanol position. We'll talk a little bit more about that a little later. Ryan brought, mentioned that when he was talking about BizLaunch, because that position has helped us with the relaunch program. Our non-personal budget reduces significantly because we had a lot of one-time funding for various things. $525,000 for relaunch, like I said, $180,000 for the partnerships. Another, I think, was it six, another, excuse me, yeah. Another $85,000 of one-time funding for 2700 South Nelson. Like, like we, we were trying to say, we want to, we want to move towards a place where we start to recover. So the way we are looking at our budget is that we are looking at the additions by the manager, strategic investments to help us move in that direction. Our goal being that all these investments will boost the economic well-being of the county and small businesses. So I'm going to turn it over to Marion so that she can talk about those investments specifically.
Okay, thank you. Can everyone hear me all right? Okay, thank you. I would, I would like to start off by thanking our county manager for including the Arlington Innovation Fund Investment, or AIF, as we call it, in the proposed budget. It's a program we've been working on for 18 months, almost two years, that the team's been working on. I'd also like to thank Deputy County Manager Shannon Flanagan-Watson for supporting us in her current role, but also in her role as interim AED Director for about almost six months, I think, last year. So our request for Arlington Innovation Fund, as Ifiak said, represents a strategic investment in our high-growth entrepreneurs. You will recall, I think everyone on the board will recall that we had a Gazelle Grant Program, whose funds were reallocated for small business emergency support and grant program during the pandemic. This Innovation Fund would replenish that tool in our toolkit, but is geared and tweaked for both our post-pandemic challenges, but also what those opportunities are. And I just want to step through a little bit of the background as to how we, how we got there and how we crafted this proposal. We had the opportunity to brief all of you last summer on the competitive landscape that we find ourselves in. Ryan touched on this at the beginning of the presentation. What we've seen is a sharp decrease in our out-of-market prospects. And the growth that we've seen within Arlington and the region and nationally over the last three years has been almost exclusively in the technology sector. And our homegrown startups are driving much of our local leasing activity. Supporting and retaining these entrepreneurs will be critical in driving and capturing economic growth in Arlington, retaining it here. And we will see that through the creation of jobs and hopefully driving occupancy in our buildings. In addition to the great entrepreneurs that we are, that we're lucky and fortunate to have in our community already, imagine all of the entrepreneurs that will be coming out of Virginia Tech, George Mason, and Amazon, as all of those institutions ramp up over the next few years. We want to make sure to capture them through what we like to call a sticky ecosystem. With industry research showing that 80% of job growth is generated by businesses that are already here, the Arlington Innovation Fund focuses on leveraging the region's considerable talent and providing those resources to the new companies. At a regional level, we've talked about this before, our lack of early-stage capital, particularly in underrepresented communities, it makes for a shallow pipeline of entrepreneurs compared to other innovation ecosystems that we compete against. With fewer startups created at the top of this funnel, we have diminished odds of producing these fast-growing, successful companies that will create jobs and fill our buildings. The Innovation Fund, I will say, we, this was not something that we thought up in a vacuum, but we've spent the better part of the last two years having, doing research, having interviews and conversations with the expert stakeholders in our regional ecosystem. That's the universities, George Mason, Virginia Tech, the SBDC, Small Business Development Council Corporation, our local startups, and also local jurisdictions. And our team is confident that this program aligns with the current needs of the market and what the gaps are, and maximizes the resources that we have at our disposal. So if we could move to the next slide, please, I'll step through, I want to say a few words about the goals of the fund and then about how they would be programmed. There are really two components to the Arlington Innovation Fund. One side is the, what we're calling the pre-seed catalyst grants. And pre-seed just refers to a very early-stage entrepreneur. Catalyst in the sense that we are requesting matching funds, matching funds to be raised and for our grantees that we would be supporting. And really, the goal of the pre-seed catalyst grants is to increase access to funding at that early stage with a focus on attracting applications from underrepresented founders. And in so doing, we are hoping to generate a very healthy pipeline of high-growth startups. In terms of what that support would look like for these companies, we're talking, we're looking at grants between 25 and 50,000. Depending on the size of the grant, that would be supporting 13 to 26 companies. And not only would we be measuring their impact in jobs and occupancy, but also are really hoping to capture a lot of additional funds that these companies would be able to raise over the performance period, knowing that if we invest at this early stage, it sets them up better for success and really scaling down the road. The other component, oh, I should mention, it's interesting that our, a couple of our neighbors and friends in the region have just, have announced or developed similar programs. Prince William County developed what they call the Ignite Fund, which has very similar goals. They leveraged ARPA funds to do that during the pandemic. Fairfax County, their Department of Economic Initiatives, developed the Founders Fund and announced that earlier this year. Those are both $1 million programs. And so we are not the only ones that have honed in on this gap in our ecosystem. In terms of the ecosystem support side, this is really our effort to continue, to really boost Arlington companies' exposure to out-of-market venture capital and to customers. We have done some, we have done some programming like this in the past. This would just be a really focused, dedicated fund to support those activities and create this ecosystem. We'd want to continue to support local and regional programming that focuses on the ecosystem. And that's not just, we would be sponsoring some events, but also partnering with our innovation partners here in the region to build something new and interesting. What that looks like is, is yet to come, but we have a lot of good ideas. I think we, as government, have a unique role to play in building out this ecosystem with all the relationships that we have. And it's an area that is consistently marked when we are kind of ranked against other innovation ecosystems, that we don't have enough of this programming built into our region here. If we could go to the next slide, please, I want to talk a little bit about small business recovery. And again, would just really like to echo the thanks that Ryan gave to the county board and also county manager for supporting small business recovery efforts during the pandemic and beyond through the CARES Act funds and ARPA funds. We're extremely grateful, I'm speaking for Tara and her team here, for all of us to have had this support, which allowed us to make inroads with businesses and provide them access to critical resources. And that's not only relaunch, but also through a lot of the database tools that you all saw earlier on the BizLaunch slide. saw earlier on the biz launch slide. This support has been critical in helping our businesses to refocus during the pandemic and adjust their ways of doing business as they come out of the pandemic. And that's through technical assistance, digital support, websites, e-commerce. Ryan mentioned this, the relaunch program has been extremely popular, especially with our legacy businesses. And it's already served over 275 small businesses, which is really incredible when you think about the period in which it's been active. And it's really helped those companies to improve their sales, hire more people, and whether, you know, not just survive, but thrive through these really tough years. The program is currently oversubscribed, and we anticipate being able to serve roughly 156 small businesses with the proposed FY '24 funds. The staff support that you see here, biz launch staff support, is equally important. The biz launch team works extremely hard and provides an amazing level of service to Arlington companies, and it's still not enough. I think particularly with hard-to-reach businesses, which has been a focus area for the person that's in this position, they really need a personal touch. It's all about trust and building the relationship. And the person in this position has been critical in helping to build those relationships. And so being able to keep this position through one-time funding and hopefully beyond is essential to help us maintain that momentum and progress that we've made and build on it. Last, but certainly not least, if we could, yeah, move to the next slide, please, touch upon the Technology Zone Amendment, which I know we've had the opportunity to brief you on recently. Thank you for that opportunity. Just to recap, the Technology Zone incentive continues to be a critical tool in AED's economic development toolkit, especially in this time of increased competition for growth. It's an incentive that delivers a positive return to the county in terms, in terms of tax revenue, and also demonstrates Arlington's commitment to supporting a thriving technology ecosystem, which is what we're known for. And this helps us market ourselves to existing and prospective technology businesses of all sizes. So the changes that we are proposing, we've worked on with our Commissioner of Revenue, and we're really seeking to align the program with current industry trends and fix some of the, the inconsistencies that have come up over time. The definition, this ordinance was drafted almost 20 years ago, and the definition of technology has changed drastically since then. And we just want to make these changes to ensure that our companies continue to qualify those who align with the intent of the program and that it remains a powerful and relevant tool in our toolkit. And we have some, included some figures that, on the impact of the changes, estimated impact of the changes that we are proposing. Again, this is based off of analysis that we did in 2019 on the full program, but we do see that these companies that go through the Technology Zone Program generate a very healthy economic benefit for, for the county, above and beyond the foregone revenue. And I believe that was my last slide. I think Ifyak gets back to you.
Thank you. Yeah, thank you. So those were the investments that we need. Now we're going to talk about the reductions. In the, in the proposed budget, there are two things that are being reduced. The AED Assistant Director position is being eliminated, and we are also reducing the cultural affairs overtime budget. For the first elimination, which is the position, this, this elimination will mean that the director and deputy director will have to take on more administrative work because they'll have to absorb some of the positions that were being managed by the Assistant Director position. In addition, the Assistant Director position also coordinates strategic partnerships between divisions, between departments, and externally. So it's not that that will go away, it's just that it will become slower for us to achieve that. For the cultural affairs overtime budget, we have moved away significantly over the last several years from utilizing staff to, to, to manage the events that happen at 3700 and other locations. So this loss will not have any impact on any stakeholders at all. Because what we've been doing is we've been using temps to fill those gaps, especially in the evenings and on the weekends. Moving on to the last slide, this is our tourism, this is our tourism promotion fund, sorry, I keep moving too far away. For our tourism promotion, this is positive. We are seeing $144,000 in additional revenue coming. And this revenue will help us to, do the things we need to do. So over the last several years, because of COVID, the, the TOT funds have been down. And this year, we anticipate that they're gonna, well, next year, I'm sorry. We anticipate that there's gonna be a $275,000 increase in addition to what we were getting, to what was budgeted in '23, which gets us to the $1.1 million mark. General fund transfer goes back to the normal transfer. In previous years before COVID, the, the normal transfer was $246,000. But for the last several years, to fill in the gap, the board has appropriated some more funding for us. And then finally, the ARPA Tourism Recovery Grant, as you may recall, we received 3.25 million, and we're supposed to have spent it all by the end of 2024. Due to federal requirements in terms of contracting, we had to slow down our spending. So last year, we thought we would spend more, but we ended up spending about $389,000. This year, we are just wrapping up an RFP that will enable us to quickly ramp up and do the activities that we want to do. So, but we will still be on track to finish the money by the end of 2024. Fiscal, well, we have till December, we, we have to encumber it, obligate it by the end of 2023. And then we have to spend it by June 30th, 2024. Our next slides are just, we just have appendix where we have the business improvement district information and the partnerships.
That concludes our presentation, so we can go through those slides, or we can just let you move into hearing from the bids and partnerships. Who I believe are here.
Thank you very much. I think we'll break it up so that we can hear from our commissions before we move into the bids and partnerships. So why don't we start with Bill Dunn, Chair of our Economic Development Commission, and you'll be followed by Ann Curley and then Scott Pedowitz.
Is this on? Yep. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I'd like to start out by thanking County Manager Mark Schwartz, again, for including key economic development investments in the '24 fiscal budget. These came in the form, as, as you've heard, biz launch, as well as the Arlington Innovation Fund. And, but the EDC supports these and other strategic investments in economic development at a critical time for the well-being of our community. I'm particularly jazzed up about the collaboration between the EDC and AED in the ultimate development of the Arlington Talent Program. This was actually the, was inspired by the Workforce Task Force of the EDC several years ago, endeavoring to organically develop a workforce through apprenticeship. So this year, so we, obviously, the beta program is, has been launched. And this year, the, the goal is to expand beyond tech to other industries for apprenticeship. Office space utilization is, is now really the biggest paradigm shift that, that any community faces in the country. And we, the EDC, do have a work, a working group for that. The worst thing that a city, a community, can do in the face of declining tax revenues for commercial space is to step back. It is absolutely, it's like skiing. You gotta lean forward in order to gain control. And this is not the time to back away from investments in our community for economic development. So that leads me to a big ask, which is that the Assistant Director's position is on the chopping block. And the primary function of that, as you've just learned, is to manage daily operations through HR, through IT, through human, through budgeting and finance, as well as coordinate the positions, coordinate with other county departments. If this position is eliminated, these responsibilities will transfer to the other positions, and those divisional directors, having to absorb those duties, are not going to be able to apply their resources to pushing forward innovation, pushing forward strategic initiatives and core programs. So I implore you to retain that position. Thank you. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Very much appreciate it. And is Ann Curley here?
Yes.
Oh, beautiful.
Can't read with my glasses on. Thank you for your time today. As you know, the Arts Commission adopted an equity statement in January 2021. The county has been very generous in giving us additional funds to put our statement into action, creating living, breathing art into our community. I want to share with you a brief snippet of some of the contributions our arts community has been able to make toward advancing equity with this additional money. They've been able to diversify their organizations, offer programming to members of all socioeconomic status for free and/or through pay-what-you-can programs, offer scholarships to in-needs families, provide after-school and adult classes for free, partner with organizations in the community to bring arts programming to areas where there would normally be no access, partner with community organizations to participate in equity programming, bring an sign language interpreter for theater performances, provide incentives to continue programming that addresses issues in marginalized communities and expand on that work, and allow for programming that is specific to learning about Arlington and the rich and diverse history of this community. The commission has heard so much more from our arts groups about how meaningful these funds have been, and they are all doing wonderful work with regards to equity in the arts and equity in getting the arts into the community. Art helps community members feel more connected, inspiring conversation about equity and diversity, and there is a real interest in the community to expand on these initiatives. The additional money the county has provided reinforces the goals of the Arts Commission and enhances Arlington County's commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion. The newly-created PLACE grant, which is centered on promoting local arts and community equity, is allowing us to expand our work further into the county by removing some of the restrictions placed on the general operating grant. This is a competitive grant program that will support community-initiated projects related to Arlington's history, built environment, and/or cultural heritage. The added funding enables us to provide information on the grant and the application in five languages, allowing us to further, allowing us to reach further into the more diverse communities that make living in Arlington unique. This commission has taken on a grassroots effort to get the word out on this grant, and we are already seeing success in the increasing number of applicants we have so far. As the budget is considered, I am asking to make the additional funds provided for the PLACE grant a permanent additional, addition to the general operating grant that is already provided. In doing so, the county will demonstrate that it recognizes the need for programming that shows our diversity and enduring commitment to DE and I, so these communities know that they are always valued and seen, not just when DE and I is a hot-button topic in the news. We are only offering six $15,000 grants this year, but the application stream has already demonstrated that there is a need and a want for this work to be done in the county. We are asking the county to recognize this and support our endeavors in making the arts a more equitable space. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it greatly. And if both you and Mr. Dunn could stay close in case we have questions, but now we'll invite Mr. Pedowitz up to the front. Where colleagues, I don't know if you had a chance to read the FAC report, but in a very unusual twist of events, they're asking us to spend more money. Take it away.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Indeed, we are. My name is Scott Pedowitz. I'm a member of the Fiscal Affairs Advisory Commission, along with my FAC colleague Melissa Edelman. I had the distinct pleasure of meeting with the three leaders on my left last week, which forms your recommendation we have. In prepping for this meeting, you know, what really jumps out to me is that AED comprises not 0.4% of our general fund spending. And yet, we are all gathered here, and it's quite a full room, for $1 and not the other $2.49, though I know we will be here for that. And why is that? I think it is because, and I think Ryan touched on this with his "we're all economic developers", the money we spend on AED creates the opportunity for everything that we do going forward. So I would challenge, by way of framing, not to think of supporting AED as sort of a juxtaposition with other core services today, though we do have to make those annual budget decisions, but to think of it as promoting the core services we have next year and the year after, and from there on. To that end, our primary recommendation, as alluded, is the restoration of the Assistant Director position. Melissa and I did spend quite a bit of time with the leaders trying to unpack this role that is a director's office position. So we really did want to get to the sense of, of course, it would be helpful to have, but is this an administrative additional sort of piece of paper, the eighth boss telling you to use the cover sheet? Or is it a vital piece of, of the puzzle? And we really did feel it was the latter. We are concerned about the cascading of administrative and coordinating tasks onto our department leaders, onto folks who should be mission-driven, and helping to really bring in that revenue that we get from AED operations. I also want to really put a finger on, I think, but Ifyak and Bill mentioned this, the coordinating role. That is an incredible soft incentive that AED offers. As somebody who works at the nexus of business and government, I can tell you, having people who know how to navigate the system connect you when you've got a problem that you think might be intractable is incredibly valuable, that AED is able to offer that and have staff who just know how to navigate, and someone who's attentive to that and it's not pulling them away from their job is really important. I will note that FAC is more focused on the, the role and the work getting done, less on the level. So if this position could be filled at a lower organizational level, restoring the talent, but saving some of the cost, we would be open to that as well. Our second recommendation relates to performance metrics, and this is, I think, a, a great challenge, in an affirmative sense, using challenge as a verb here, to, to track the full lifecycle of what we, what AED does and how economic development works. And again, getting back to the point I made before, that we take the dollar we spend on AED and FY '24, it turns in, with some probabilistic actives, actions here, into economic activity, into sales, into office vacant, or office tenancy, which ultimately will lead to our general fund going forward, which will translate, again, into the services that this government provides. I think it's an important narrative to be able to tell, to be able to do it on the whole, and we would encourage AED to really try to help paint that picture and track metrics there. I will say, I think it was a good thing you all were hard-stopped. If we had had 15 more minutes, I think you actually might have started to do it on our call, which was not our intent then, but I think it's something that bears saying that while, yes, we want to be able to track the very hard, sort of, we sent X many emails and we went to X many conferences and talked to Y many businesses. I know you used the same variable twice there. I think some of these broader things to help us understand and track our investments are important. By way of future considerations, and I will be brief with these, I'll let you read the full text, two more general, two more specific. Wish though we might that it were not, 2019 is irretrievably in our past. The challenges we're going to have going forward are going to be different. This morning, Economic Development Commission, it was suggested we might be out to the end of the decade before we know kind of where the current economy settles out. What this means is that we are going to have to change how we measure. And I think for the community, that's important to understand that core metrics that mattered in 2019, or 2014, or 2009, or 2023, then may not be as meaningful going forward, and we need to be ready to make those changes. And then also for AED and for our leadership to make sure that we are evolving ourselves and tracking what is important. Additionally, economic development is very much an all-hands-on-deck approach. While some activities might generate the biggest headlines and can maybe, you know, sort of grab the highest numbers, we do want to have a thriving, sustainable economy that really touches the entire community. And so I think you actually heard a lot of examples of this in the presentation, but we do want to put the note on the importance of recruiting and supporting businesses of all types and really located entirely through the 26 square miles. Two more specific points. We were really intrigued and enjoyed the conversation we had about the Northern Virginia Economic Development Alliance. We discussed, I don't think it was in the presentation, really expanding its work. We acknowledge that as that happens, it may change some of the balance between NOVA EDA and AED, so we'll want to be mindful of that as we set budgets going forward. Again, these are future considerations. And lastly, we are excited for the potential of the Arlington Innovation Fund. Thank you, Marianne. Thank you, Marian, for elucidating that for us here. Of course, we will want to track that, to maximize its effectiveness, see baselines for improvement there. We really, again, thank the team for an excellent conversation last week, have our recommendations here, and commend them to the board. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Pedowitz. Colleagues, why don't we have some discussion on what has been presented thus far before we separately hear from our bids and partnerships? Anyone to start? Ms. Crystal?
Happy to do that. Regarding the Assistant Director position, how long has that been vacant? It's currently vacant. How long has the AED been operating without it?
Since September.
Okay. So relatively recently. Thank you. A much broader question, I was really struck by Mr. Toohill, your use of the term structural vacancy, the result of the oversupply of office space and demand hitting an all time low, and I think that's maybe a really important paradigm shift for us, that perhaps it is not feasible for us to get to zero, right? I'm thinking, for example, to import a term or a concept we've used sometimes in human services work, right? The idea of functional zero. It sounds like you're already kind of thinking this way, right? What level of vacancy might need to be converted, going, you know, building by building to figure out the troubled assets? What feels like a reasonable functional zero for our community? What is a reasonable thing for us to be aiming for in regard to that vacancy rate?
I don't have an answer for you tonight. And Mark, you can jump up if you have a better answer, but I think we're going to go through our analysis this spring and identify, I think, kind of where in the market we'll have potential to make some changes outside of just re-leasing. I don't want to speak ahead of that, just because I don't have all the data in front of me, but Mark, do you want to expound on anything?
Yeah, and we've had this discussion with EDC with some local experts and national experts, and I think at the high end, people are talking in the 20, 15% to 20% range of office space. Again, a lot of that is the obsolescence of some of that space, that's just not competitive, and that's where conversions or redevelopment occurs. But some of it's everyone trying to figure out what this real metric is, how tenants are going to use space going forward relative to employee size.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that insight, and it sounds like more to come.
Everybody wants to get in on this. We're going to start on this end first, Mr. De Feranti, and then work our way back.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I kind of am interested, I think I've seen this, but I want to actually understand it better. You know, I came in saying, you know, four, five years ago, the office vacancy rate was an obsession, and I think the denominator has gone up. But that, you know, you have conceptual thinking to do to see what, how much we may need to shift office to residential. But, and I think somewhere is the analysis of what our overall denominator is, but that is something that I could use as a sort of a refresh, because, you know, that could provide a little context for that conceptual functional zero question is, I think we're up over 10% just in the last two years, but I don't know for certain. And so, you know, I'd love to see if we could follow up with a, what's the denominator growth over the last four or five years, just as we start to wrestle with this question of how much needs to be converted and how big is our structural challenge over the next decade? So that'd be great if you can follow up with that.
Yeah, we'll come back to you with something on that. Thank you.
Terrific. Thank you for that, Mr. De Feranti. Mr. Carantones, and then Vice Chair Garvey.
Thank you. It is an interesting discussion about, I understand that office space is not a uniform commodity, so you already mentioned that, you know, Class C, Class B, age. And this is important because we also need to understand what are the assets that will be front side, and, I mean, which asset you will be pushing the most, which assets will be more available for thinking of alternative uses? And sometimes the alternative uses are even commercially very important, because, you know, there are, there is still a market for Class B office space. The question is whether we have developed the tools to access this market. So I do believe that the conversation that Ms. Crystal has started here is worth digging in and understanding better. This is not for now. For me, I know that this takes a lot of effort, and in this conjecture, you know, having to discuss a minus 3% on your budget is kind of challenging for me. I would rather focus on being stable or even invest more. But talking about that, the AIF, on the Unrenovation Fund, I'm trying to find a way to understand, I generally understand the concept and who we want to be supporting here. We are talking about funders, the matching funders from, you know, from, they're specked in a way that I understand these are banks or other funders of startup businesses. My question is, are CDFIs among these certified funders? Are the small startups also startups in the small business, minority business area? Is that also an instrument that we can test against our equity goals as well? And the reason why I'm saying that is because I deeply believe that there is a lot of growth potential there, as you already see. You said that they are already growing out of their homes and going into, you know, work spaces. That could be B-spaces, by the way.
I might ask Michael to come up to talk a little bit about the matching funds, but I think more generally, we're, oh yeah, you can come on up. Michael's been developing this program with several others for a couple of years, and so he probably has a little bit more insight into who, what startups we'll be looking for in terms of matching. But I just want to say, I think, I think to the bigger point of, you know, we really see this as an investment, and I think this is unique in asking for the companies to find that match. That's something I've not seen, and I think that that's a really good approach, because it creates that true partnership. You know, it's not just us giving money to somebody and hoping that it goes well, it's them showing also that they have the buy-in. So I think that's something I really, I really focus in on, on this program. But Michael, do you want to address maybe some of the VC and the funding parts?
Yeah, in terms of the co-investment grants, I mean, part of the reason we wanted to have that requirement for co-investment was to help us also validate that these are companies that have a likelihood for success. I mean, we don't want to be giving government funds to, you know, to startup that has a little high likelihood of failure within six months. We want to make sure they're hopefully viable businesses, add employees, and hopefully lease square footage in the future. So this is one mechanism to do that. We're also planning on, you know, going out and hiring a firm to help us evaluate the proposals, similarly to what we did during the Gazelle Grant Program. We actually had a venture capital firm out in New York City who had analyzed, they'd meet with the funders, analyze their proposals, their business plans, and ensure that they were viable for the future. So we plan on implementing that as well, if we do receive the money. Going back to the question on, hopefully I get all the questions, but please feel free to ask, you know, if I missed something. On the equity side, while we're not having a requirement for, you know, a certain type of demographic for the applicants, we are, you know, going to do a lot of work to reach groups that are underrepresented. The internal goal we're working with is the 50% of the applicants would be for underrepresented groups in the kind of venture capital startup scene. That includes populations along racial, ethnic minority lines, women, LGBTQ population, and veterans, as those groups are all typically underrepresented in the overall venture capital scene. But we're not planning on having a requirement for any of those. It would be more, we're making sure we're doing outreach to those communities throughout the process.
Michael, on the, I think Taka said a question about CDFIs, and on the funding side, are we looking at equity match, or is debt financing something that we would be looking at?
It's a good question. I wish Adam, our person who helped us really create this, was here to answer that detailed question.
Good luck into that.
Yeah, I think we're, I think we're, you know, primarily looking for, so what accredited investor includes is really, it can be multiple due to things. It can be an individual angel investor who has a certain net worth, or they've achieved an annual salary of a certain number over a few years. They aren't accredited by the SEC, but it's more the company needs to validate these items as part of their filings when they raise the money. Also, we could be looking at VIPC, Virginia Investment Partnership Corporation. They also do a lot of pre-seed investing, so they could count as a match for this program as well. And we plan on leveraging, you know, some of the investments they've made and companies they've invested in that are in Arlington. We could also co-invest in those with them.
But in general, the intention here is to have a startup that's already vetted by somebody who is creditworthy, right? Because this can be also loaned money. And we are adding the extra facility to make them even more viable, both in terms of their business plan, but also in terms of their viability with their initial creditor, right?
Yeah, correct. I mean, the purpose of the program is to, for the companies itself, is to extend their runway. You know, when you're, these companies are at their very early stages, it's usually, you know, one or two employees, someone who's just venturing out, you know, from their full-time job, or out of a university perhaps, to create a business. You know, they have a minimally viable product, you know, they've identified a market for the product potentially, but, you know, they need some initial funding to maybe quit their job and, you know, pursue this full-time. They might need to hire a first employee, they might need to bring on a consultant to help them through, you know, technical things or financial goals, whatever it might be. So probably having this fund and this funding potentially, I would allow the companies kind of an extended runway to hopefully become viable and, you know, hire more employees and grow from there. That's kind of the goal of the program, is to, you know, find folks that have a high likelihood of success and just kind of help them ensure that they can get to the point of becoming a true company and successful.
Okay. I will be definitely more interested in the details of that, because I try to gauge the potential and, you know, what can be built upon that, and how it intersects with the work of Biz Launch and others. Thank you.
Vice Chair Garvey.
Yeah, thank you. I want to return to the Assistant Director position, because it is unusual that we have commissions saying to put back in a position, and we have two of them. And I noticed with Ms. Crystal's question, you said it has been vacant since September, and I think, Ms. Marquez, you were about to add something, so I welcome you to do that, if you remember what it was you were going to add. And my question is basically, which maybe you were going to say, how has it gone since September without that person?
Well, I would say we've been really lucky to have Ifyak in the role of acting. That being said, he did not backfill the operations, you know, he's our operations manager during normal times. So I think I would just say that we're experiencing what it's like to be stretched very thin. I think it's done a fantastic job, but there's just, there's something to be said for, you know, keeping the wheels going and covering the trap. And then there's also the strategic initiatives that someone in this role can really focus on if there is a full FTE, and that would free up a lot of bandwidth elsewhere in the leadership team within AED that I think will be lost if the position goes away.
Thank you. That's a helpful question, then, Mr. Toohill, because you may want to add more, what about a half position? Would that do it? I don't.
Not at that level. I think, I think if we lose that position, we'll have our Operations Manager position still. Any additional support would probably be more part-time and then helping the Operations Manager, but we wouldn't get that strategic level of a position. We're waiting to kind of maybe do some reorganizational changes, depending on how this all shakes out, because we have, our org structure will change if this position goes away. And so that's just something we're, we're being cognizant of in terms of, you know, the impact.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to do another round, I assume?
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
They're here for a little while. We've still got the partnerships and everything else, so many opportunities. So I'd like to go back to the reporting analysis from the Fiscal Affairs Advisory Commission, because, you know, I actually think about both of their recommendations working in concert. You know, number two, really thinking and digging into what are the activities that actually lead to success, and being able to track them over time and not just measure work and the snapshot of any given year to determine success. I'm incredibly interested in that, just as a way to both help boards make decisions about how to allocate resources, but really to allow you all to function as efficiently as you can, which leads to the first one. You know, Mr. Toohill, your just being here and bringing in fresh leadership is sort of gonna accelerate what we were doing to some degree, but without the capacity to not be stretched thin, as Ms. Marquez mentioned, I'm pretty concerned that you're not going to be able to operate very efficiently as a division. And that lack of efficiency will not necessarily lead to great results per unit of work, if you want to get really technical, or, you know, just, and we won't talk that way. Anyway, the thing that I'm concerned with is whether you can have a clear vision of whether the budget that is proposed for us will actually lead to what was your overall goal of maintaining the quality level of output that we are currently doing, while also leading to making some inroads into some significant initiatives for the future. Convince me that that's possible with the budget that we see before us.
So I think when we think about our programmatic divisions and the work that we're doing there, I think we have the right staff. So if we think about business investment or small business with the new position, or any of our other programmatic divisions, I think that's where, I think we are, we are good there. I don't see a need, I've asked the team multiple times since I've been here, if we need extra support in some of those, like, key business development roles. What I'm, what I'm concerned about is as we think about the future and we're rolling out, you know, we're doing some internal work to realign our organization, we're thinking about our strategies going forward, it really does concern me that we may not have a senior level position to help manage some of that process, in addition to just lots of the additional work that it takes to run this department, in addition to all the partnerships that we have. I mean, we engage with a lot of partners, and that all creates MOUs, or, you know, transfers, or information sharing. And so we really do need to make sure that our core team is really focused on that. This position also oversees our communications team right now, which is, which is well-staffed, but we're really engaging and doing a lot more in that arena than we have in the past. So I think, can we get our baseline work done? I think without this position, the answer is yes. It may just take us longer to do it, and it just may require us to prioritize differently. That's where I think this will end up. But as for programmatic positions and programmatic funding, I think we have the resources that we need right now.
And as to the FAC second recommendation about really digging into the metrics that we use to determine the sort of utility of every dollar invested and spent, I'm presuming from that explanation, that would not be an area of work that you would be able to pursue, given current and proposed staffing?
I think we would do our best to do that. We also, I just, as someone who's new and came in midway through the budget process, I'm looking through the metrics and the things that we track, I think it's a very fair recommendation that we need to revisit all of that. I think we've had some legacy metrics in our budget and things like that. So how we measure our success is something we can, we're totally open to, and that would take, that honestly takes not only the core leadership team you see here, but also every division head is part of that conversation. Again, though, I just think if we start implementing new things and tracking new things, it is going to take us more time just to do that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right. Round two. Mr. De Feranti?
Thank you.
No, I'm sorry, Ms. Crystal.
Please, go ahead. That's fine.
Okay. All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Ms. Crystal. So on the Assistant Director position, it might help me, you've described it in slide, and you've described it just now very well. I think it might help me in follow-up, just to understand a little bit, the deputy position and the Assistant Director position and how those interplay. I think you've described it a little bit, but if there, if it's handy, and keeping in mind that the county manager does not want the county board involved in management decisions, but in order to make the policy question of funding, that would be helpful. So that's a thought, certainly open to it, at least for my part. I'm mindful of where we have been on this budget and the deficit that we had, and we may be in a slightly different spot, but I don't know. I would say that just being transparent, the position, helping Biz Launch, that almost strengthens the case, in my view, for Assistant, the Assistant Director, because I know there's been such a need on Biz Launch for that second position. So that's just, I guess it's a short editorial comment. And then the last is for the manager. I'm interested in following up with you as to whether the TOT can lead to additional ongoing money beyond the 1.1 million, and we don't do an update of that estimate, right? It's only the property side that we, tax side that we do.
Well, I'll answer that last question first. You all were paying attention to the other questions.
You all were paying attention to the other questions. Okay. We will come to you probably in the last week of March with an update on all our revenue sources and potential reestimates, both up and down, about what we propose. So there's always that potential. I, so I can't speak to that specifically right now, but we'll be to you at the end of the month with an update on that.
Okay. I just wondered if it's even plausible with respect to TOT because I know the other, other revenues. So that's helpful. Not so much a question, but certainly if you have thoughts on those, I'll also follow up if that, if that can work for both you. And I thank you to the leadership, but also the entire team. Prosperity is dependent upon a lot of what you do. So I think it's worth saying thank you to the full team.
Thank you, Ms. Crystal.
We got a really interesting suggestion from the Commission on the Status of Women when they joined us on Thursday about trying to disaggregate gender in work across departments. And one of the areas that they flagged, which I thought was interesting, was the BizLaunch program beneficiaries. So page 688 of the budget has that metric of workshop attendees and number of one-to-one meetings conducted. Does the team collect data on the demographics of participants in those programs? And if so, is that the type of thing you, you might imagine being able to share in some form or fashion with the community?
Tara, do you want to come on up?
I have a suspicion that it might be a success story to talk about. So I was especially glad that they raised it.
Oh, that's an excellent question. We have been able to, over time, see an uptick actually in women entrepreneurship. Across the nation, we just did for International Women's Day, I have some of these stats. So it's like 60% of men, 49%, 40 to 49% of women as we're getting out of COVID. So some of these numbers, we're actually seeing ourselves. I can go back through and get the exact numbers, but it's really enlightening. Like I had meetings today, all women entrepreneurs and women creating businesses to be able to help women with childcare and having places where you can come and do your business and have your child cared for. So the things that we're seeing are innovative as we're coming out of the pandemic, but they're also, we're seeing a stronger women really coming in and, and starting businesses, which is very exciting. So we do track those demographics and we're so excited to see the numbers.
Oh, that's great. Well, I would love, if it's possible to get it in follow-up, we can share it with the Commission and maybe we can future yours too about how to publicize that story so that they can find it in other interested members of our community.
I would love to do that. Thank you.
Ms. Garvey.
Yeah, thank you. A comment and then a question. I'll just slip into real quick, Mr. Chair. I really liked your slide number three, which was Business Success Means Community Success. And you feature arts parks and libraries, public schools, affordable housing and safety, and talking about how, you know, these all depend on economic development. And I, I think, as we all know, economic development depends on the community as well. How are we going to attract and retain people? They need good schools, good parks. They need housing. So I think it's, it's great. Sometimes we forget, you know, we go through the budget. This is the linchpin to me, in a way. This is the linchpin of everything else. Nothing else is going to happen unless this is actually functioning. And this isn't going to function well unless the community is functioning well. So I just appreciated that slide. That just wanted to say that. Thank you. Question about the talent program. I went and toured, I was so impressed. I mean, it just, I was stunned by the people. You know, what I saw were, I guess it's eleven, the students that I saw, people who were kind of stuck in life. They were smart. They were ambitious, but life had not dealt them a fair hand at all. And this helped them level up. And it was just, I was just so impressed with each and every one of them. I have, in my many years, been on three workforce taxes forces, one for the state, one for the Northern Virginia Regional Commission, and one for the, for council governments. And this cracking this nut of finding people who are talented and getting them into the pipeline just seems really hard. Sometimes I think a lot of times the issue is the nexus, is the connection with the business community. So the business community is telling us they need these people, right? And I know someone else who worked with the District of Columbia and actually had a similar program. And he described it to me. That was actually taking students that were like dropping out of high school that they thought they could, you know, really. And again, I asked him later, how did it go? I think they had 16 students. He said it was great. It turned lives around. It was a complete success, but we couldn't figure out how to make it go to scale. So it didn't continue. And that seems to be the real nut. So I'm just asking, expound, discuss, maybe not here. What, why is the business community not? It seems to me the people who benefit from this and should really want and are telling us they want it aren't there to actually help it happen? That's what it seems like to me. So comment, please.
Yeah, I, I'll, you're, you're spot on. You know, Northern Virginia Chamber and the Northern Virginia Community Foundation just did a survey and apprenticeship was like to the bottom of the list on how do employers find talent? And they're doing it the old way of job posting boards and things like that, which, which is upside down. So we know that's the case. I think in our specific program, it is a pilot. We've been, you know, testing it and seeing how it works. I, I think there's a real opportunity to engage employers here in Arlington in a very strategic way. And we just, we just haven't done that yet. I write, we have a video coming out this week, as I mentioned, that, that, you know, kind of shows the program and everything and all the benefits. And I asked the team, how are we going to get this in front of employers that are here? Is it direct outreach? Is it, are we sending it to them? I mean, because that's how we're going to get these partnerships to, to grow. And so I think it's just, it's just time. We haven't had the time to do it yet. We want to make sure the model worked. And we've had one successful cohort. We're now in our second. We're feeling really good about it. So I think it's just, once we can have some data to show, hey, here's what, here's how it worked and what was good about it, I think that's a way we can engage the business community and potentially have some success there. Just to touch on another issue you raise in terms of scale, we are going back to explore funding mechanisms like GoVirginia to see if we can get some regional partners involved. We have not had good success here. I had zero success with GoVirginia in Alexandria, but we're going to take another crack at it and see if we can unlock some funding. And that's a way we could get some regional partners involved, which gets more employers involved. So I don't know if there's anything you wanted to add, Marian.
No, I think you're spot on. And it's, I think we all kind of bang our heads against the wall because we're presented with this data that there are companies who can't fill positions and then those same companies aren't willing to try something new. I know when Steve Cooper from Acceleration talks about it, it's really about risk, you know, and sort of the time. Explaining this concept to someone who has a live project that has to get done, they're not willing to take that risk or the time. And what I've found through this, what we've seen through this pilot program, a lot of the companies that he's working with, there's some kind of relationship there where they're willing to take, they know his group, they know the quality of his work. They're willing to try this different model. And I think we have a big role to play in AED and also with our neighboring jurisdictions because this is something we're all trying to work on together, as Ryan mentioned, to scale this one day. And there's similar groups doing similar things in Alexandria, Prince William, Loudon, Fairfax. I think we have a big opportunity because of the relationships we have with businesses. We've been doing a lot of introductions for Steve and his team to companies that are here in that kind of sweet spot, small, medium size. And I think that's the role that we can really help to play in de-risking this a little bit, socializing it with companies in our region. And so that's, that's kind of in our work plan once this pilot wraps up. And hopefully we'll have future cohorts with this. But in order to make it meaningful, we do need to scale it to a more regional level.
Yeah, thank you. And I actually have connected Steve Cooper with Bob Lozaro and I'm hoping he's going, they're going to do a presentation and maybe you all can work your, work your magic there. And then I'll, I'm almost done, Mr. Chair, and I'll be done. I think it's interesting that you, we had this discussion where so the businesses are kind of nervous in their retract. And this is the time to start taking a risk, right? I mean, that's what they've got to do. If there's anything we can do to handhold, I think if there's anything board members can do to talk, I mean, happy to help with that. And then finally, on this one position, I keep a little running tab here about, they're all additions so far, Mr. Manager. Colleagues, I've got to find out the money. But I put the Assistant Director down because it is feeling like, again, it's a bit of a risk, but this is not the time to pull back, I suspect. So thank you. I'm done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
All right. Mr. Karantounas.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to mention that, you know, innovation maybe should be starting at home and we are a good employer as well and we should be looking at our own policies with training and, and, you know.
I'm going to say that, what is today? Tuesday?
That's.
Okay. Yesterday, I had the entire executive leadership team go over to AED for a presentation on the talent program. And so I had at least four department directors raise their hand saying, how, how can I do that? I said, well, you know, I'm sure our administrative regulations and the hiring protocols will make it that easy, but we're going to work on it.
And maybe one-time funds, right?
Reminder to all that this is a budget work session and we still have another section to go.
So just, just a very short one. On marketing and marketing our story, that's slide number 10. I am really excited to see that you have a new, new approach and you approach with new vigor, the issue of public relations and public relations initiative. I think this is extremely critical. We have to have the brand of Arlington out. I think this will be extremely helpful with everything that we're discussing here and would produce the positive metrics of return investment of these dollars, right? So can you elaborate a little bit what you're looking at? Because, for example, in, in the metrics of, you know, the, on the supporting measures, the public relations placements are kind of stagnant. So you, you project the same number of public relations placement, whatever the definition of that is, like in previous years. So are we, are we, you know, strategically invested in having a significant improvement there?
Kelly, if you want to step up, you can. I'll start. I think, I think we will in terms of the, at the public relations piece. Like I think this is going to be a big change for us to have a company that, that is focused on this for us. Any other metrics that you wanted to mention in terms of what we're seeing?
Man?
Yep, right there.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat your question? I had a hard time hearing it from over there.
So I'm sorry about that. So the question was about the public relations placements and how this correlates with, you know, with the initiative to hire a public relations company to, to do this work for us or to improve this work for us.
So actually, this new program is nothing in addition fund to what we've had for our pretty stagnant budget over the last few years. But what we're really doing is refocusing how we're approaching marketing in general, so not just public relations. One of the things Ryan mentioned is we're looking at a really integrated marketing plan, which includes email marketing, social media and public relations. And we're not just measuring the results of that in a vacuum. We are driving the results of that. They're all in a related. And so in the case of public relations over the last 15 years or so, we have been very reactionary. We have had earned media and we report that earned media, but it's not something that we are driving. And we saw something very relevant to that when Amazon came on board. Our numbers of earned media quadrupled because we were always in the, in the news. So what we're doing now is being very strategic on how we're getting our earned media. Again, this is not placing an ad. That's, that does have its purpose, but this is what others are saying about us and how effective. We find that to have a much larger return than any of the other types of vehicles. But what we're doing is in the case of our target markets, you know, our industry targets, workforce development, and especially just at a local level or even regional level, is with the talent program that we just talked about is getting the message out on a success case study. The reason we did the interviews and did the testimonial video is to promote the, the project so that people will write about us and hear the program and want to know more about it. So the return on the public, public relations investment is really just a small part of our budget, but it was a reallocation and we're, just to see really the results of that. And again, not across, just not PR, but how it's going to drive traffic to our website and conversions at our websites.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, I think we're ready to move to the last few slides in your presentation covering the bids and partnerships.
So we are, for the bids, let me just, okay. For the, for the bids, we are just showing here our change in revenue for all three of the bids. These are based on current tax rates. And then in the second slide, we are showing our partnership budgets. There you'll see what is proposed in the, in the proposed budget, which is, is removed a lot of one-time funding. And, and you also have in there what was actually requested by each of the partnerships. I don't have any additional comments on that other than allowing the bids and partnerships to go ahead and have their time.
Let's do it.
Thank you.
So why don't we go just in order of alphabetical by last name? So it's Mary Claire Burek here. She joining us virtually?
She's virtual.
All right, great.
Hi there.
Hello.
Good to see you all. And thanks for the opportunity to share a few highlights on our work plan and a little context around the budget and a little context around the budget as we think about and plan for the future. As we're navigating this evolving economic climate, I think delivery of our core services really has taken on more significance than ever before. So think about our operations, clean and safe team, our marketing and event work to engage the community and bring everyone together, as well as placemaking and beautification of the neighborhood. These really all are playing such a vital role in ensuring that we continue to thrive and remain competitive despite the economic headwinds that I think we all are facing. So to ensure that our work plan remains aligned with the county's priorities, we've really increased cross-departmental collaboration. And I would say this has proven really quite successful. It's helped us identify areas that we can contribute. It's created efficiencies and I think it really is helping to meet the community needs. So in looking ahead, our work plan outlines how we will continue to deliver in all of our program areas as we always have. But we've also identified three key priority areas where we will be focused that also are overlapping with the county budget. So no surprise, the first is commercial vacancy. I think we really need to think creatively and we're prepared to work collaboratively with the county on Arlington's commercial office resiliency. We think it's critical to ensure that county staff has the manpower and resources necessary to drive our economic competitiveness. So I would refer back to Bill Dunn. Investing in this now really is investing in our future. So I would also support the FAC and EDC request for not losing that assistant director role. I really do think it's critical. And I would say creative strategies such as Arlington's Innovation Fund that Marion talked about are a great start. But we'd like to encourage further investments like that that really do expand the toolbox and help the team to incentivize the existing and new businesses to locate here. Number two, we applaud and urge continued prioritization of the commercial market resiliency initiative. We think it's been great, along with those efforts to streamline the county's processes and the zoning code to allow for more flexible and emerging uses. I would say with development projects facing financial uncertainties across the region, we really would like to stress the importance of prioritizing CPHD's upcoming work on the major versus minor site plan amendment thresholds. We think this really will help staff workload and mitigate against project delays and risk. And I would say, you know, advancing the projects planned or underway in Roslyn's pipeline today is anticipated to deliver $11 billion in new investment. So that's why this is important to us because we think it really further solidifies Roslyn as a desirable 15-minute neighborhood. And number three, investing in Roslyn's public spaces and unique outdoor amenities has never been more important to enhancing the quality of life here for our 11,000 residents, 20,000 employees and millions of visitors each year. So doubling down on the county's commitment to advancing the core of Roslyn transportation projects, expanding river and trail access with the Arlington Boathouse Project, and reimagining Gateway Park are all critical to not only supporting economic sustainability, but I like Board Member Garvey's term linchpin. And I really think these will help us establish a much-needed anchor for our community and create a vibrant gateway into Arlington. So in closing, we recognize that partnerships are more important than ever. We all need to be working together. And so to that end, we'd like to thank Shannon and Valerie and county leadership across departments. They really have just done an amazing job with guidance and cross-collaboration. And I would just say we're ready to tackle the challenges ahead and we're eager to continue our important work of collaborating with the county staff to bolster that common goal of economic competitiveness.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burek. And next we'll hear from Tracy Gabriel. Is she also joining us virtually? Okay.
I am. Good afternoon, Chair Dorsey and members of the county board. I'm Tracy Seiya Gabriel, President and Executive Director of the National Landing Business Improvement District. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today. My regrets for not being there, able to join you in person. But first I'd like to take a moment just to thank the board, the county manager's office and county staff for all the hard work and collective efforts in support of our bid over the past year. And special appreciation is due to Shannon Flanagan-Watson for her guidance and support on our board, as well as interim AED Director, and to Elizabeth King as our liaison. We're also very excited to work with Director Tohill as we move forward. And we found that the county's partnership has been a major strength to our own work. And we understand that the county is now facing, you know, significant headwinds and that the budget situation has called for some difficult decisions across agencies as reflected in the county manager's budget. And we, you know, encourage the county to appropriately fund and staff, you know, efforts to combat commercial vacancy, ensure market resiliency, and innovate in the space of economic development, similar to the Innovation Fund we heard about today, given the fact that there is major uncertainty and potential reset of our commercial real estate market. You know, we must remember that commercial vibrancy remains deeply tied to the county's fiscal health and requires a proactive, well-resourced approach so that we might continue to attract both major corporate headquarters, as well as vibrant small businesses to our growing urban centers like National Landing. It is in this context of resource constraint that the role of Arlington's bids increases in importance, especially the opportunity to fill gaps and meet the needs of our districts through collaborative partnerships, which we've heard a lot about today. In this spirit, the National Landing bid was excited to engage more directly in outreach to county agencies and developing our FY 2024 work plan and budget. In meetings with AED, DPR, DES, CPHD, they gained valuable input and feedback on National Landing priorities, which resulted in a more collaborative work plan and roadmap. Specifically, our work plan clearly articulates areas for close county coordination, including the formation of a National Landing Innovation District or HUB, exploration of a National Landing Foundation, publication of a green print outlining our parks and open spaces, and collaboration on public art, placemaking and wayfinding plans, among other efforts. Broadly speaking, the National Landing bid's priorities to continue to divine and support National Landing as a model for the post-pandemic downtown by focusing on uplifting the area's profile, enhancing vitality through programming and signature events, strengthening commercial competitiveness and advocating for best-in-class urban amenities, parks and connectivity. The bid is currently engaged in developing a new strategic plan, the recommendations for which will further guide the bid's work in FY 2024 and in years to come. While our strategic plan is still in development, it is...
Tracy, we lost your audio.
You're muted.
Am I back?
You are back, thank you.
Okay, sorry about that.
We missed about 30 seconds or so.
Okay, well, I'll just focus in on we're, we're doing a strategic plan and the contents of which will guide our work for the year ahead and for years going forward. The five key themes that we'll be focusing on is elevating innovation and economic position, building destination value, managing growth and enhancing place, supporting next-generation parks and people-first mobility, and cultivating an inclusive community and evolving our organization. And as we look ahead, the National Landing bid will continue to evolve in response to the needs of the region's fastest-growing downtown district. And we aim to serve as a national model for bids experiencing major reinvestment. And we look forward to our continued collaborative partnership with the county in the year ahead and be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And please stay tuned in case we do. Now I'd like to invite up to the front, since she is here in person, Tina Leoni from the Boston Bid.
All right, good afternoon, everyone. It's nice to see everyone in person. It's 11 years now for me in this position. And so it's, it's, it's kind of amazing. I feel like I come back with the same story every year, so bear with me. But this year, you can see the success that we've had in the strategic plan that we've given you in the, the annual work plan that we presented with our metrics from last year. By the way, last year we only had a team of three. We're now four. Pinky Advani has joined us as our business engagement director. This year for us has been about contract, contracting are what we're doing. We finally have, our budget has finally caught up to where we cannot serve all of the people all the time as we really want to. So, you know, just to give you a comparison, we are on par with Roslyn, and I'm not picking on you, Mary Claire, but in, in size, in the amount of blocks that we're supposed to take care of, the geographic area. And Roslyn's budget is two and a half times ours. So we've been facing this year after year and doing more with less and, and doing a great job of it, by the way. I think our metrics are fantastic, but it's caught up with us. So this year, we were due to do a strategic plan. We did that. And our board made the decision that we needed to focus solely on commercial business, the employees in Boston, and contract our efforts in the public realm as far as events and placemaking activities, which is, to Ryan's point, exactly what you all, they want us to be doing. So I just wanted to make that point. We, we will be, but the good news is we're here to support the efforts of AED. That's really where our focus is going to be, is to support their work to attract tenants. And we are focused on retaining those tenants and making, the employees have a wonderful time in Boston and want them to come back in the office, fill that office space back up. So our business retention efforts are focused with, with Pinky and, and conducting business appreciation campaigns and just getting, getting them back in, whatever, whatever that is, if it's events that we host in, in their office or in their buildings, et cetera. That's where our focus is and supporting the work of Ryan and his team. So that's where we are. So we, we've had to contract. Our budget has remained relatively flat or going down over the last six, seven years. If you account for where we are now, we're back to fiscal year 13 levels of funding. And that doesn't include inflation, so you can imagine. Everything else goes up, the cost of people, the cost of operating. So we are doing our very best with a team of four to fulfill, you know, the, the, and try to, you know, work, try to work and engage the entire community. But again, our efforts will be micro-focused now. So that being said, we do work to supplement our budget. It's, it's getting tougher with a smaller staff. But my team and myself over the last 10 years have raised $3.8 million to supplement our tax assessment funds as well. So in some cases, it was up to 37% of the tax assessment funding that we provided in addition to that. That's getting a little tougher with a smaller staff. And now we are contracting our efforts, so that number will be smaller. But we are, we are, we will continue to do that through membership, sponsorships, grants, any, any other type of funding outside of organization we can do. So we are high on collaborations and partnerships and those things. This is something we do and we will continue to do that as well. So I just wanted to also echo my colleagues' comments about the great work that's going on. The Arlington Talent Program, I interviewed Ryan for the, for my podcast and Steve Cooper. Amazing program. I, I can't express, you know, more that, that this is a, just great work, great ideas going on to support that, as well as the commercial resiliency, the market resiliency work that's being done. Excellent. I mean, we hear brokers all the time saying, can we do this? Or I have a client that wants to do that. Fantastic. And the fact that we can take it to them and have them say, oh, we haven't done this yet? We'll look at this, which is wonderful. So anything we can do to bring that vacancy down, I believe Boston's a little higher than, than what the county is overall. We need to want to, we want to definitely supplement the help and supplement those efforts as well. So also I want to reiterate the, you know, what we've heard here too about preserving the assistant director position. I mean, everything is on AED right now to hit it. They need, they need that, that additional person as well. So that's where we are. We're, for fiscal year 24, we will be, you know, following along with our strategic plan, what we have, what we have in there to, again, it's tenant and broker programs and activities to, you know, get that vacancy rate down, retain those, those, those companies that are already in Boston. So, and with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, thank you. I think we'll go through and actually hear from our partnership representatives who are also here. And in this case, why don't we start alphabetically by the area that you serve? So Karen Daly from the Clarendon Alliance, you're up first. Got to do something to entertain myself, so.
I was wondering how you're going to end.
Thank you for having us here today. Defining the budget is a huge task and it's hard to come up here after looking at the budgets for the bids and talk to you about the budgets for the Clarendon Alliance.
Different scale.
Different scale, different scale. And I do think it's very important to kind of frame for everyone that the Clarendon Alliance supports the area from Virginia Square to Courthouse. With the two one-ways, we almost have a double whammy. We've got more than two miles of business and residences that we support. And it's important to supply our organization or a similar entity with the resources to perform the same activities that are done with the other partnerships. I think the best evidence for making the investment in Clarendon Alliance is illustrated by the investment that's been made in the Columbia Pike Partnership. In the last seven fiscal years, $2.3 million investment in the Columbia Pike Partnership's activities. In the Clarendon Alliance, it's been about $500,000. And that $1.8 billion gap, billion, $1.8 million gap is part of the reason that we've not been able to sustain ongoing staff. And we've not been able to hire staff at the level of the expertise that can deliver the way Columbia Pike has. I lit, I applaud the Columbia Pike and I was able to support that organization professionally and as a volunteer and a business resident of the area for a number of years. So I have some of the background of what's worked and I've been able to see how that works. But now is the time, you know, I had actually written down the same quote from Bill because I was at the Economic Development Commission this morning. And it's not about cutting economic development. In some ways, remaining stagnant at $80,000, with the exception of one bump one year over the past seven years, we've kind of realized a little bit of a cut with the inflation and our purchasing power and our ability to really function at the level that you need us to for this corridor is really hindered. So it's, it's time for the investment at a more realistic level to jumpstart things. Last year, we echoed a request that we've made for several years to jump us up to the mid-100s so that we would have enough to have a more competitive salary for executive director. That's an essential piece, but we really think we need at least 1.5 employees to support the continuity required over, over time. When we lost our last executive director, she was a star. But she also didn't, she wasn't relying on the salary base that we had to function at the level she did. And our next hire was supplementing the income that we could offer her and it, it didn't work out. She was not able to do everything that we needed her to. So it's time to make that necessary minimum investment so that we can be the extension for all of AED's programs. Over this time, I've been bridging the gap in, while we've been trying to hire someone. I haven't, as a president of the organization, I felt like we needed to remain involved as, as much as we could. And so I have, with few exceptions, I have not turned down any meeting. I've done them in the morning. At night, I participated in Mark's session a few weeks ago as they were developing the budget. But that's not sustainable. And there, as a business owner in Clarendon, I want to see the similar support that we have in some of the other areas in, in Arlington. So, you know, the other piece of this is a full-time hire is really what we need because having that role means having a meeting now, having meetings at eight o'clock in the morning, having meetings at seven and showing up at all of the other sessions. It's, it's something that takes a dedicated person who can be all in. And so I would ask you to look very closely at the memo I prepared with our budget request for 150K. It's relatively small leap for what's required to maintain vibrancy, help retain the people that are here and add to the quality of life that we've talked about in the, in the macro presentation about AED. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Daly. Appreciate it very much. Next up will be Kim Klingler presenting the Columbia Pike Partnership.
Would anyone like a paper copy? Old school? All right. Okay. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be here and thank you so much for your support. We are fortunate because the base funding you provide us allow, along with our donors, our sponsors and our partners, enable us to serve the community by offering 77 free programs and events that promote, and make sure I got the language right here, business district vibrancy and include our Blues Festival, our Wellness Festival, Paws on the Pikes, movie nights at two separate locations, the State of the Pike, mixers for small and home-based businesses, our Juneteenth Walk, and most recently, our Black History Event with the Black Heritage Museum of Arlington, who we share a home with, and the Swiss Embassy. COVID truly springboarded our small business support efforts. And we could not have done this without our partnership with AED, with BizLaunch. Thank you so much, Tara, for you and your team, with the Arlington Chamber of Commerce, with LEDC and ECDC and many other partners. This brought our community together and allowed us to continue our bulletin. Taka, she want the most recent copy? Oh, wonderful, where is it?
Everybody here.
Yeah.
Okay, okay, just checking.
They're gorgeous.
However, something you do not have, but Ryan has one, our upcoming book launch of Recipes for Recovery, telling the story of our restaurants on Columbia Pike and how they were able to survive and thrive in, during COVID through our Buy Nurse Lunch Program. And Amy Vanna, we'll, we'll pass those out right now. Thank you, Amy. And of course, quite a few ribbon cuttings in partnership with BizLaunch and the Arlington Chamber of Commerce. Our annual State of the Pike showcased all of our partnerships with the county and with the Pike Presidents Group. We have regular meetings with CPHD, BizLaunch, Stay Arlington, Transportation, Arlington Arts and others. We also have representation on the Food Security Task Course, the Form-Based Code Advisory Working Group, CART and MVAC. And I'm not going to go through all the acronyms, you guys know them. Our goal is to continue the great work we are doing and continue to use our sponsorship package, which has been updated this year, to bring in additional partners and sponsors. This upcoming fiscal year, our goal is to continue to focus on the needs of our diverse businesses. After all, we are a world in a zip code, including those that are at risk of displacement due to upcoming development, as Ryan mentioned earlier. This also aligns nicely with the priorities that came out of the Columbia Pike Commercial Study, which thank you for funding this a few years back. And now we really want to focus on fully executing the recommendations and priorities that came out of the study. In order to do this, we need to transition our part-time bilingual business engagement specialist to full-time, as well as conduct a study in partnership with one of our local universities regarding best practices. In addition, we want to be able to clearly articulate, and this is a conversation Katie, you and Christian and I had, the investment that has been made in Columbia Pike, which includes the Form-Based Code, multimodal and transit, barcraft apartments, by developing a shared holistic vision of the future of the Pike that everyone can truly get behind. Once again, we thank you for your support. We are fortunate in our base funding. And we appreciate any additional funding or one-time funding that you can provide to help us further expand our partnerships and help our incredibly diverse community. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Klingler. We appreciate it greatly. And stay close if you can. And we'll next turn to Ginger Brown, Executive Director of the Langston Boulevard Alliance.
Hi, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Ginger Brown. I'm the Executive Director of the Langston Boulevard Alliance. And thank you for having me here today. The future of the Langston Boulevard corridor is bright. After more than a decade of community engagement and grassroots work by, by LBA and an epic collaboration and partnership with the county, a new 30-year plan will be adopted for the five-mile-long corridor. After decades of missing out on investment, we will have the opportunity to begin to implement the county's vision that Arlington will be a diverse, inclusive, world-class urban community with secure, attractive residential, commercial neighborhoods where people unite to form a caring, learning, participating, sustainable community in which each person is important. Langston Boulevard will finally have the tools to begin to realize that countywide vision. With the plan in place, the moment... With the plan in place, the implementation will begin. The county will enjoy considerable economic benefits. We will transition from single-story commercial buildings to seven, 10, 12, and 15-story commercial towers and mixed use. But let's face it, implementation can be messy and fraught with challenges. There's, could be business displacement, additional community processes involving the 17 different North Arlington civic associations, construction headaches, and many more challenges. Change is hard, but LBA will be the on-the-ground organization to help guide and smooth the transition by leading placemaking initiatives, hosting events like the New Earth Day Festival, acting as a liaison to the county, or to the community, and welcoming and supporting our businesses. Langston Boulevard is a very big place. It has five commercial centers and 17,000 residents. It will take a serious collaboration, partnership between LBA and staff to achieve the standards of service set forth in our other commercial centers in Arlington. The businesses and residents along the Langston Boulevard corridor do deserve comparable standards of service and investment. Arlington's bids and partnerships have done an excellent job guiding change in their neighborhoods, and we will too. We were asked to highlight some considerations, and our biggest consideration is that we simply do not have the resources to successfully help guide that change. Since 2016, we've been operating on a shoestring budget. Our responsibilities have grown, inflation has hit, but our budget hasn't moved. Our most basic expenses are not covered, leaving us no room to hire talent for the future of the organization. We do successfully fundraise to support the organization. We cover all of our programming expenses now. Our festivals are expensive, and we are getting better at it all the time. Each year, we are raising more money than the last. The one-time funding that we received last year to boost those efforts will help even further, and we thank you for those. Regardless, we need a higher level of ongoing funding to stabilize the organization and plan for the future. We've done everything in our power to identify efficiencies and reduce costs. There really isn't anywhere to go to reduce cost in our organization. We only pay for part-time hourly consultant services. We don't offer benefits, no vacation time, sick days, health care. We operate in an office space that is slated for redevelopment. We only pay for utilities, and we share those costs with another nonprofit. We cannot cut insurance or accounting or monthly expenses or other numerous other mandatory ongoing expenses. We are here today to humbly ask for stabilizing ongoing funding. Our work plan, we asked, to have ongoing funding, 150,000. The investment that Arlington's other commercial neighborhoods have enjoyed through their partnerships and bids is visible for all to see. Now it is time to bring Langston Boulevard and its neighborhoods along as well. Langston Boulevard is going to be such a great place in Arlington County. The county will enjoy the economic benefits, and the residents and business owners will enjoy a more secure, attractive neighborhoods. Finally, I can't end without saying thank you to all of the wonderful staff that I am privileged to work with on an almost daily basis at AED and CPHD. Susan Soroco, Natasha Alfonso-Achman and team, Joff Stolfits, Emily Cassell and team, Angela Adams and team, Tara Palacios and teams, just to name a few. The collaboration between LBA and all these teams is quite something, and I look forward to the continued partnership.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. All right, colleagues, any questions, discussion points with our bid, represent, bid leadership, partnership leadership? Or any bone mods for AED staff? Okay, Mr. Carrington, start us off.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thanks to all bids and partnerships for everything they do. I really, I'm really biased on that, but I have to say, I truly recognize how much they are contributing to what we call economic development, and it's very, very base. And it was one of your initial slides, right, when we talked about placemaking and, you know, branding Arlington differently. So I want to ask, I mean, there is a stark difference. For many years, Clarendon Alliance and Langston Boulevard Alliance have been funded on a very, you know, stable form, but in a very insufficient form. We know that because we can see the difference of performance between the Columbia Pike Partnership and these two other partnerships. What is the take of AED on this? How do you envision our policy towards these organizations? We have clearly, in my opinion, two different models. One, that I guess, at least in my opinion, performing excellently for the public money that we're investing in it, and two, who are trying their very, very best, but they cannot, you know, support the level of performance that we would like to see in two very critical parts of Arlington.
I'm going to answer that by saying that in my experience in Alexandria, we had 11 neighborhood partnerships. We did not have any bids. And I think the challenge always is that if volunteer-based organizations, with volunteer-based organizations, is it's very difficult to achieve the objectives and the expectations that you, we hope for as a community when there's not, when there's not that stable funding source. I've not been here long enough to give you, I think, a full assessment of bids versus partnerships and, but I would say that just in my experience, I've seen where that model can only take you so far. And so if the board and the community feel that there's something different we want to do, I think that's where I would leave that.
Thank you. I definitely feel these are, these are beyond neighborhood partnerships. These are, these are corridor partnerships. So they are the closest we can come to a business improvement district on volunteer-based but extremely committed ones, and professionalizing them and allowing them to grow this way. It's, I think, has proved an excellent investment in case of Columbia Pike, and I think there are, all conditions are given for Langston Boulevard, and a little different context, but, but also for Clarendon Alliance. Additional question for staff. So there was this, last year, we talk about the strategic funding pool, $180,000. Can you give me any idea whether we have spent that or are about to spend it, or how, what is the impact of this decision? This was additional money that was, actually, the idea behind that was exactly the same type of thinking that we are discussing right now.
The status is that we are just this week releasing the money. It has not been spent yet.
Thank you for this clarification. We are close to the end of the fiscal year, so what is going to happen with this money?
So we've actually got a report about what the disbursements will be, so we'll be sure to make sure that gets recirculated to the top of your inbox. All right, Ms. Garvey?
Yeah, thank you. Obviously, we have two very different kinds of groups here, and I appreciate Mr. Carrington's questions and your response. So, Mr. Toole, you're new here, and I think the offer to, you know, perhaps reconsider if the board wants to. I would appreciate some advice from staff, some thinking on what maybe not by the time we get to the end of this budget cycle, but I think we are to the point either we're going to make a leap forward or just sort of struggle along. And I really do appreciate, I think it's amazing, the work that the partnerships have been doing on very shoestring budgets. So, thank you. I think that it may be part of your whole rethinking about, you know, where we're headed. So I would appreciate that thinking and your thoughts in the future. I would like to ask our two, and actually, the three bids, just what's your greatest challenge? I am guessing for Ms. Leone with Ballston, it's the short, it's the tight budget, but Roslyn and National Landing seem to be in a different spot. I'm just kind of wondering what you sort of see as your greatest challenges to what you needed to be doing.
Want to start with me?
I think so. You're right here. Thank you. Nice to see you.
Yeah, office vacancy is absolutely the biggest challenge for, I mean, as an organization who is only, we're only funded by commercial office and retail. So we do not have commercial apartments in our bid, even though geographically they represent more than 50% of what we would have if they were included in our bid. Our budget would be more than double right now. So yes, it's critical for us, and considering what Mark McCauley just said about more conversions happening, we've started the conversion wave 10 years ago. This already started happening. We had a lot of our industrial properties along Glebe, the South Glebe Road start to convert. We see it's still happening with Harris Teeters now converting into apartments again. So the only development that's happening in Ballston is apartments. That's, and there's more coming. So we have at least two projects that come to mind, maybe a third that's going to happen in the next three to five years, so we will technically lose those buildings outside of the bid. So our budget, and again, seeing what Mark just said about more conversions or, you know, or who knows, teardowns, who knows what's going to happen, our budget will continue to decline. So that's going to make it more and more difficult for us. We will do everything we need to do, everything we can do with what we have, but there's only so much money I can raise and my team can raise outside of that. And then as the team gets smaller, it's going to get more and more difficult. I mean, I, you know, the, it seems like we're coming full circle. When there was a Ballston partnership, the bid was created because we needed more resources. And so we got more resources, but the apartments not being included at that time really makes us, it handicaps us as far as being able to help everybody that we really want to help and serve everybody we want to serve in our district to the level like that Mary Claire and Tracy can do in their districts. I mean, Tracy's is much bigger, but Roslyn is a similar geographic area, and certainly their buildings are worth more. We understand that. We would have, you know, the same kind of budget that Roslyn does, but without having the whole community contributing wholly to the bid tax, it's impossible to serve the entire community. And to go back, placemaking efforts and beautification, those things cost a lot, a lot of money. And there's only, there's only so much we can do with the budget that we have. So our board determined that we needed to focus on that, on those who are paying into the bid, therefore are the members that we need to serve. So that being said, it's the tenants, it's the employees, and support the efforts of AED.
Thank you. I appreciate that sort of structural, you know, explanation.
And did you want to invite?
I did, I did. I spilled them there. Yes, thank you.
Why don't we start with you, Mary Claire?
Yeah, thank you. It's a great question. I think commercial vacancy is the number one thing that we're watching and, you know, trying to keep our arms around. Obviously, you know, when you have a built environment like Roslyn, there are advantages that come to that, but then there are also drawbacks. And one of the drawbacks is that in order for us to get a more balanced neighborhood like what you do see in Ballston, what needs to happen is continued redevelopment so that we continue to bring in more residential. The good news is, is that we had already started this conversion years ago, so that's the good news, is that, and I think that is why Arlington in general is doing much better than the district, for example. But for us, it's about being able to bring those amenities and really sort of cement the 15-minute city that we've become. And so needing those amenities, a lot of them have to happen through redevelopment. And right now, the financial markets and the economic uncertainties make that challenging. So we're really trying to figure out, just like across the county and really across the nation, how do we pivot our urban mixed-use areas? How do we pivot them from being office-centric to really, you know, I hate the term, but live, work, play? How do we, how do we continue that trajectory? And so development really is important, and that's why I really stress CPHD's work and AED's work being incredibly important for us.
Thank you. Last, but not least.
And Ms. Gabriel.
Yes, thank you. So I would concur, obviously, from a market standpoint, we face the same challenges on, you know, determining what the future of office is and shoring up our efforts on economic development. But more broadly speaking at the bid, we, you know, from a budgetary standpoint and the trajectory of our organization, both the challenge and the opportunity is that we are growing rapidly, and we are working very hard to evolve our organization with the growing needs of our area. We've had a lot of our spaces come offline and be in construction over the last few years, so we've had to pivot and find new places to do events, to, you know, reconfigure our programs. And we've tried to do that, you know, nimbly, and we're very excited about the number of projects that are coming online this year, which will be focused on bringing sustained programming and attention to.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate that, and I will just ask Mr. Toole and his staff, you know, over, and I'm sure you're doing this, I would be, it feels like we sort of need a rethink, particularly for Ballston. No matter how good a job, I realize with the structure setup, you can make it beautiful and wonderful and attract lots of people, but you're still not going to get more of a budget because of the way it's structured. So I think, looking forward, just something else for your plate. Thank you. Yeah, yeah. Thank you very much. And I really appreciate everybody, all the good work you do. Thank you so much.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Crystal.
Yeah. Speaking of structural problems, I am thinking actually that there is probably a lot in common that the Ballston bid has with our partnerships, which is to say there is a structural issue between the, maybe the funding model and perhaps the governance model and the beneficiaries of this. You know, one way to look at this is that our partnerships are like our bids but not resourced to do it, and it's up to the county to give those resources. Another way to look at it is that our partnerships are nonprofits, like many nonprofits in our community, doing really important work. But there is a question about to what extent is it on the general funds to meet the needs of what those organizations are doing. I am thinking about how there is maybe a need for a broader conversation with business stakeholders and county government across our partnerships in particular, and maybe to sweep in the bid, because I, Ballston bid, because I do think there are some of these mismatches here, to say, what is it that we want out of these fantastic backbone organizations that can do so much for the corridors? What is it that we as government expect out of it? What is it the businesses expect out of it? And how should they be governed, and who should pay for it? I think until we call that question, the implication is always going to be that it is up to the general fund to meet the full budget obligations of these organizations, which is reasonable from where they're sitting, even though government is not the ones governing these organizations. I don't know how to do that. That is a big conversation to have. It stretches across different areas. But when I think about what the needs are, and when I reflect over the many years that we've been sort of trying to solve these problems, and I've watched incredibly dedicated, hardworking people trying to make the impossible happen in different quarters of the county, there just, to me, seems to be such a need for a broader conversation. If that is something that AED thinks they could help us facilitate, I would really welcome that, and ideas about how we could structure that, what a working group looks like, what the recommendations and outcomes could be. This may be a question for CPHD as well. But I do think we have, just at the end of the day, a basic mismatch. I don't know, looking at the organizations doing, for example, Safety Network in the county, that I could justify taking on with the general fund the support of organizations' full costs of operating, when we're not doing that for those who are addressing homelessness or domestic violence in our community. At the same time, they have to have a path forward that is more than just limping along until the county does decide to step up and fund their full costs of operating. This is more of a creed of core than it is anything else. I don't know if AED has initial reactions, but I throw this out there because it's sort of where my head is. There is a need for a much more structural, honest look at who's benefiting, who's paying, and what the shared expectations are.
I mean, I'll just say, you don't have to respond at this point. I think, colleagues, over the course of the budget process, might be something that we think about as it relates to budget guidance. Certainly a larger conversation. I will just say, since this is a budget conversation, I wouldn't be doing my due diligence as chairs to say if we're going to expect that AED is going to solve the, or not, or work on this issue in the year ahead. We may also want to give some, do attention to the resources. So, anyway.
And we have to find the money, too. I know. I got it.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. DeFrande.
So, thank you for the comments. I guess the place where Ms. Garvey and Ms. Crystal kind of align is, I'll be interested in your thoughts, keeping in mind that I think budget guidance is the, from my perspective, is the right place for the ongoing bigger conversation that Ms. Crystal mentioned. I will say that I want the Langston Boulevard broader area to enroll deeply in the equity work that my neighborhood has not done as much as it needs to historically. And that's not all of Langston Boulevard. There are plenty of equitable... There are plenty of equitable, plenty of parts of the partnership that have. But I can't, this coming year, as we still are working on the plan, I think that there's some operable conditions that make investment there worthwhile. And I am scheduled to talk with a lunch as liaison to Clarendon Alliance. So I'm mindful of guidance as a location. I do think that investment is something that I'm at least open to doing. And I know the conversation will continue. I guess perhaps staff's expertise along those lines would be helpful over the coming weeks and as we finish our piece of, as we work on the budget. Thanks.
Anything else, colleagues, before we wrap up? So I think this is very appropriate, and I'd like to just thank everyone for presenting and also everyone for speaking today. As I think our bids and partnerships can clearly hear, we appreciate the work that you do. We think that it leverages the dollars that are invested quite well and are wrestling with these larger systemic issues or structural issues, as Ms. Crystal described them, is not a reflection of the work that you do, but really being mindful that without a clear rationale for how we go about funding certain activities, we don't create a good governance model for our community overall. So that's a concern for us, not for you. You rightfully are coming with very concrete asks, and we appreciate that. And we'll consider those over the upcoming weeks of the budget process. With that, I am going to close this work session and remind everyone that we will take about a 45-hour break before we're back here again to do a work session on Thursday, the 16th, at 3:00 p.m., where we'll cover the Department of Parks and Recreation as well as libraries and consider the manager's compensation proposal. With that, we are adjourned.